Okay, we on?
Yeah, the attendees are coming in right now.
Okay.
Um, so just for the members of the public that are joining right now, there was an issue with the noticing of the meeting time. It was noticed for seven o'clock, but the board members had switched to a 7:30 start time. So we don't, we don't have a quorum just yet.
Why don't we just?
Are we going to come back at 7:30 or are we just staying on until?
I think we have to stay on because it was noticed.
Yeah. So why don't we do this? Well, we'll start the first hearing at about 7:20. I think by that time, usually Robin is a bit early and the chair isn't here. And if not, we can just start it then. I don't think there's that much for the first one. Are the people for the first one here yet?
I, I think because the hearing was noticed to start at seven, we might want to ask if anyone from the public is here to comment so we can take that comment.
That was good.
Yeah.
Is the applicant here for the, for the first one?
I believe so.
Now, why don't we let them go first then if you want to start with?
Yes. Before we get started, I need to start re, I need to make this go live on YouTube.
Okay, before Greta, would you want to wait until 7:30? What do you want to do, Greta and Meg?
Let's, let's, you know, let's start and you know, Robin can catch up.
If we find that there's something that we really could have be full board for, we can, we can move that in the schedule. Let's, you know, we could, we could weigh that as we open up each chapter.
And we do have a quorum to take.
We have a quorum now. Um. Okay, I'm going to go live on the custom streaming service. Just give me a second here.
Meg, do you want to, you want to start this or do you want me to? You know my preference.
I would prefer that you start.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening. This is a meeting of the Board of Appeals. It's the meeting tonight, which is October 7. And we have a quorum at this point. I don't have to tell everybody how to exit because you can't. We're all home. And we have one member not here, the chair.
You're in trouble if you don't know how to exit.
You should, you have, you're responsible to exit how you exit. All right, we, we have the continuing hearing in connection with 437 Ward Avenue, who has submitted to us an October 6th letter, going through the history of some items and indicating different things. And I'm going to, at this point, allow the applicant to, if the applicant, would you like to speak about what you submitted and just fill us in? I know we had already heard you the last time, so it would just be something new. And I think there were only a few items that were left open. There were some questions of compliance issues.
Right, so I'm, I'm, I'm here to help out Alice again. So Charlie Gottlieb reached out saying to submit a written statement by the applicant saying how they are, how the applicant is complying with each item under 342 dash 42.1A. And what we submitted to Charlie, I'm not sure if you have that with you.
That is the October 6th email, I believe it's.
Uh.
It's the email to us. I don't know that he would have that date.
It's October 5th.
The letter stated.
I'm sorry, it's October 5th. Thank you. You're correct.
Right. So I think there were a few things that were touched upon at the last meeting. So, you know, among other things, you know, they, the applicant checked and I guess she didn't understand what you were asking for last time, but they do possess like each massage therapist, her and her partner, they possess the New York State registration certificate. So they have a copy of that on the wall behind the front counter along with the license. They submitted the, the fingerprinting to the, the police department along with the, uh, a register of the information that's required under that section. So they, they do have a sign. They always had a sign, but she confirmed that there's a sign on the second floor window at the store. Not sure what else was requested last time, but regardless, there is a response by the applicant in that October 5th letter saying how they're complying with each part in that section.
Okay. All right, we have that and you'll go through everything on this. Any board members have any questions on this?
I reviewed the letter. I, it was very helpful that you did it in line comments with each of these standards. So that was a list of the standards for, that the village code has for massage service establishments. And it does look like you've complied with all of those standards. I did notice your sign in the window. So thank you very much for supplying that information.
Thank you.
Any members, are there anyone, any of the board members or then I'll turn, how about the public? Do we have any, anyone here who wants to speak to this? Okay. All right, um. What time is it now? It's 7:16. All right, what's the sense of the board? Should we close or you want to wait for Robin? What do you want to do?
I think we close.
Okay, is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to close this out.
There's a second.
A second.
Okay. Greta?
Yes.
Yes, Meg?
Yes.
Yes, and I'll vote yes. So the hearing is closed. What that means is that we've now heard your matter and it's closed and we will decide the matter. It may not be at this meeting. It may be at the next meeting. But I just don't know. We may take it up tonight, but thank you very much.
Thank you. They can op, they can continue to operate.
I believe because they've already, because they've made the application and they've had a special permit, I believe that's been the understanding up until now.
Got it. Expires, I think, early November, but they can continue to operate if it doesn't come before then. Okay.
All right, is that the consensus of the board as well?
Yeah. I think that's customary.
Yes, it is. I just was just asking if, thank you for your customary consensus. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Bye.
Have a good evening.
Bye.
The next, Meg, will you sing a song for us?
How about a joke?
So a guy goes into a bar.
We go, if we take a look at the closed applications, as we have no other new business here. So if we look at the closed applications, perhaps we take a look at some, perhaps Smash Burger or some of these resolutions. Do we feel?
Okay. Which number is Smash Burger?
I'm looking at the agenda now.
Thank you.
My suggestion is Smash Burger is listed as number five, I believe, and is case number six SP 2000. No, 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 excuse me.
No.
I'm sorry, it's hard to read how this is.
Here, I can share my screen.
Number four, number four.
Number four.
Isn't that?
Seven SP 2015, yes.
Okay, one second. Let me just. Hold on, Mike. We have a, we have a draft resolution on that?
I don't believe we have a draft resolution.
No, I don't believe we do.
No, we just closed it at the last hearing and we didn't, we didn't actually deliberate, I don't think, or.
Wow.
Discuss.
Would you like to deliberate on it? What are your?
This is a renewal. They're not changing any of their operations. We didn't hear anybody in the public or anybody raising any issues with how they are performing. I would just like, I would like to ask counsel if it's possible as we renew this special permit to change the term that we are giving this permit, permit for to a carryout restaurant or restaurant comma carryout, as is listed in our zoning code, because we don't have the term fast casual. So although the first special, if, if the board is inclined to approve this, of course, but as we were referring to it in our resolution tonight, is it possible to amend the term to carryout restaurant and not use the term fast casual restaurant? Because I, it's not in our code. We don't have standards for it. It doesn't require a special permit. So it doesn't make sense to have a resolution for a special permit.
Right.
I'm just glancing at the definitions. Would it be carryout or would it be fast food?
I discussed with the, on the record, last week, we discussed their operations. How eat in and they, and they deliver food to the customers who are sitting at a table, but that the majority, they thought that the majority of their operations are to take away. So I, it's not fast food. It fits the definition of carryout restaurant, but that is, that is what I determined after I reviewed the terms in the code.
Okay.
Because I don't think the food is pre-made or prepackaged. It's, it's made to order, I think. So that takes it, carryout is more applicable than the fast food definition.
For consumption off premises.
Because it has a counter where you can order and you have seats. And I do know that after you order, I have been there. I know that food will be delivered to your table. So that portion is a restaurant, but the majority of it is to take away. That's what, how it reads in the.
And the seating would be accessory to the main business and to the extent.
If the main business they were saying was to carry out, either people come in and pick it up or with Uber Eats, there was a lot of people picking up. So I asked that specific question, whether which is the main operation. And he wasn't quite sure, but he felt that he estimated that the majority would be the takeaway and not the eat in portion.
Yeah. So as long as if the change is intended to reflect reality and consistency with code definitions, not reflect any sort of change in operations. I don't see an issue with including that designation now.
Perhaps we could note that in the resolution that the, the change in the term is no bearing on that there's any consideration. The board hasn't changed and the, and the changes haven't changed to the village code.
Yes, not intended to be a substantive, reflective of a substantive difference.
Okay.
You guys do. Greta or Dave, do you, do you have an opinion on that change to carryout restaurant?
I agree with you, Meg. I think certainly we should use defined terms in, in the code. And I agree for all the reasons you stated that the appropriate characterization would be restaurant carryout.
Yeah, I don't know. When you write it in a resolution, can you write carryout restaurant or do you do restaurant comma carryout?
I think we'd say carryout restaurant. Anything else?
Hello.
Hello, how are you, Rob?
Well, so the rest of you wanted seven o'clock?
Yes, and we, we are live at this point.
I was going to eat when I saw the time on the thing.
I didn't realize. So the first thing I want, welcome everybody to the October 7th Board, Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. I apologize, we had some confusion about what time the meeting was beginning, some of us at least on the board. What, yeah.
We started about 10 minutes ago.
Did you?
Yes, we had asked, we were told it was noticed and, and I was involuntarily volunteered. But while we.
You accomplished.
We accomplished tremendous. We finished, actually, we were about to take a motion to close, but first we heard the, um, the, the young, the application on a 437 Ward and they just referred to their submission. And no one had any questions on that from the board. They, I think they had submitted something. And that was the only matter that was heard and closed. And there was very little heard. There was no one from the public to speak and there was, I think the board just basically had looked at their application and looked at their October 5, I believe it was. I don't have it in front of me now, but their submission.
Okay. We moved now to the Smash Burger. We thought that that was something possibly we could start that. Before we begin, let's take up something else. And what I want to take up is meetings and meeting times. So the first, let's get this resolved so we don't have it. Are we going to continue to Zoom, Zoom, Zoom meetings or do we want to reconvene in person? It's up to us. What do we want to do?
For the November meeting we're talking about.
For the November, and obviously we could do this monthly or unless otherwise, what do we want to do? As a, as the practice for the next meeting, my two cents is that I prefer meetings in person will have to be, I mean, I have to, I'm going to be masked, but I just somehow I like meetings in person, but I don't know if the rest of you want to do Zoom, we'll do Zoom. What do you want to do? That's really what I want to ask. And after we decide that, then we'll decide what time. So let's make the decision.
I'm not sure I have a major preference either way, Meg.
Meg or Greta? I prefer Zoom as long as we're going, I would feel inclined to wear a mask. And I find it very difficult with a mask. When I get to the point where I don't, I feel comfortable and everybody's comfortable without wearing masks, I'm happy to, of course, happy to do it in person. But until that time, I found it difficult to hear one another, difficult to express myself. So I, for that reason, I would like to stay on Zoom. Okay, Greta?
I prefer in person, but that being said, I don't want anybody to be uncomfortable.
Yeah.
With that.
Then let's leave it a Zoom for now. Yes.
For November, can we revisit it then for December?
Absolutely.
Because my preference for what it's worth is I would say that I would concur with Greta that I, I think it's, it's more efficient or something works better with it, but I, I think that no one should be uncomfortable. And I think it's, it's certainly a wise move to put it off for a month. It doesn't hurt.
No, no. So we've agreed. It's going to be on Zoom next month. Okay, next question. What time? Do we want to do it at seven when it's Zoom? Or do we want to do it at 7:30 when it's a Zoom? Um.
Since I don't think it makes any difference to when we end. Eight o'clock would be a great time. But seven, my vote would be 7:30, but I'll defer to anybody else. I don't care.
I like 7:30 as well. I prefer. Yes, that's fine. Pretty is fine with me. I'm sorry? 7:30 is fine with me. Greta, you okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so the November meeting will be 7:30 on Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay, now, now let's go to the closed applications. Now you wanted to take. Already started discussing Smash Burger, just to let you know. We, we had some comments on it. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
We had jumped to one that seemed to be a little bit more standard in its approach and our, we didn't have a lot of discussion about this application. Um. I had no comments. I haven't, I had no comments. So on the Smash Burger, I thought the renewal is fine. So I don't know what anyone. Comment that I had made and that, that Rob was helping us with was simply, I am inclined to approve this result, this, you know, renewal of the special permit as well. I was just asking if we could change to a code fine term rather than the undefined term, which is a fast casual restaurant. We don't have our code and we don't have a need to give a special permit to a fast casual restaurant because there's no standards. So I, that's why I had asked the business operator or the applicant before us last time about his operations. And I was suggesting that we change it to carryout restaurant. And Rob had suggested that it's, it, I had to change it to a code, a term that's found in the village code.
And as Meg pointed out, we, we can note in the resolution that the change is being made just for consistency with the code, not to reflect a substantive change in operations.
Okay, does a restaurant carryout need the same special permit? Does the same provision apply if we call it a restaurant carryout? I don't have a problem with changing the name, but do the same provisions apply? Or how does it worded in the section that deals with special permit?
Good question. We'll pull up the use chart. Well, I don't want to hold everyone up here as I look for this. Would it be acceptable to say we will make that change provided, Robin, that the use, the special use permits requirements are the same for this use?
It's real, if there's only one special permit requirement, the question is, is a special permit required? What are the provisions regarding special permit with respect to? A carryout, how is it worded? There's even no special permit required or it's the same because we only have one in the village. I just don't have the section numbered in front of me. So does anyone have a section number in front?
Nor do I. I'm, I'm trying to pull it up.
Meg, do you? No, I don't. I'm looking. Yeah, so I thought you might. Okay, wait, special, yes. Okay, so assuming it, but okay. The other thing I'd say is if we call this a restaurant carryout, then it's very difficult to distinguish a restaurant fast food from a restaurant carryout. And every fast food restaurant could be conceived of as a fast, as a restaurant carryout. So I think we have to be careful of how we're doing this. If you look at. I made the point, Rob had asked, did I, would I consider fast food? And if I had, and I made the distinction that it was generally prepackaged container directors, I would say generally meaning the most everything is in prepackaged containers and definitely Smash Burger cooks to order. It's not prepackaged food. I think that that's a salient point for fast food. So I'm not sure that everything, I think that is a very big distinction between the carryout and the fast food. Also, the restaurant carryout does also include a space where you can sit and eat at the table. That needs to be a component of it. I don't think that's a component in the restaurant fast food. I think that there is a, there are marked differences between the two. And we all have gone many times, we've commented that these definitions are, could definitely use some clarity and some updating, but I don't think there's, there's and, and no doubt, Robin, at some point, there'll be something that hits right in the middle, but I don't think it's a prevalent problem. You know, I'm happy to give it a defined term and I honestly don't, you know, and it's a good suggestion to make it a defined term. I'm not opposed to that. I just want to make sure that whatever term we give it doesn't then come back to bite us for something else. Because if you ask me, when I go to Burger King, at least the last time I went to Burger King, which was probably 15 years ago, I also made a custom order. I make a custom order wherever I'm going and it was made to the way I wanted it. So. Yeah, I think generally or proportionally what the sales are, that seems to be what these definitions are getting at. Defined terms. Isn't a possibility that you could, there's a possibility that somebody would come to your table and take your order and do it for order sent it. But if you're off, that doesn't, you know, change you from being a fast food. I have no problem. I just raised those two cautions of what is the special permit provision say and will this come back to be a problem for us in the future?
Well, I, I'd like to read just one thing from the definition of fast food restaurant. And it says a facility where most or all the sales to the public are standup services. So that's not Smash Burger.
Well, I don't know, because it's for the preponderance is takeout. That's standing up because you just stand up, you get it and then you take it out or you call it in and you're just standing up. And we're saying that the majority of sales are standup.
Well, you know, it says fast food is not a carryout restaurant or.
Right.
Well, contested.
And I will just go back to the, the very beginning sentence. This is generally served in prepackaged containers or wrappers. And prepackaged would mean that the food has already been made and it's prepackaged. You can't prepackage. I don't think they're talking about this raw ingredients being prepackaged. If you have to then cook it and then wrap it up, that's the distinction between something that is prepackaged. Yeah, but I don't know. I, I mean, honestly, I don't know that any fast food restaurant, and I don't go to, haven't been, I mean, I don't go to that many, so I can't answer. I have not been to that many. And I'm thinking of something like McDonald's or Burger King or Wendy's or one of those where you order what you want and then they wrap it up. So that's why I'm not so sure how that distinction applies. But I'm okay with leaving this with, if we can, if, if we're okay with, as long as the special permit provision applies.
Do they have a drive-in window?
No. No.
Okay.
It's on, no, it's on the main street. It's not driving.
And their general commercial district?
Yes.
So principal permitted uses include restaurants, which is subject to 342 dash 45. And the use is subject to the approval procedure set forth in Article 10, which are the special use permit.
342, 45 are the list.
Sorry?
If we call it a fast food restaurant, carryout or carryout restaurant, do we have to make that determination about the 200 linear feet? Is there something else? Yes, because right next door is the that ice cream, that frozen yogurt place. So it is closer than 200 feet. If we're going to call it a carryout or fast food, then we have to deal with the 200 feet. I thought that the proximity only was about fast food, not about carryout. No fast food restaurant, carryout restaurant or delicatessen shall be permitted on Marinerick Avenue closer than 200 linear feet to another existing fast food restaurant, carryout restaurant or delicatessen on the same side of the avenue. And, and they, this is a renewal. On their last special permit, did we, did we give them the the proximity? We didn't discuss, didn't have, at the time, they didn't have the other businesses there. Well, because we didn't call it a fast food or carryout last time, therefore it didn't need the 200 feet distance.
Well, so, so last time we really didn't.
We fudged it.
Yeah, we fudged it. I, I, I don't think the applicant should suffer because we didn't deal with the issue.
No, I don't think so either. But if we're going to do something now to make it more in line with the code, then we have to make it, we have to carry that through and do everything else more in line with the code is all I'm saying. So if you want to call it fast food, I mean, sorry, if you want to call it carryout, then we need to make that determination. Which would be a variance is the problem. You need a variance for that because it's not a special permit.
Well, they're, they're existing. So it's especially, and it is a special.
Yeah, I don't see how you could not renew because a new building came, a business came in and built next to you after you're already there for three years that you're going to now say, I'm not going to renew it because you're too close to somebody else. That just doesn't, you're the pre-existing thing. But they weren't existing, weren't they built at the same time as the ice cream place next door? I don't know which opened first. I believe the Smash Burger opened first. I'm absolutely certain. I, I know it didn't, it didn't open second. It, it was there for a while. I think it was open before that the, the frozen yogurt place opened. Then the frozen.
What, what we can do is mock up a, a resolution, think through what the potential unintended consequences might be. Determine if any variance relief, if any, might be necessary and present that to the board and determine if you want to make a change or not.
That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, Rob, one of the options is to simply renew it as is, right?
I'm, I'm okay with renewing it as is, as. The problem that, that Meg keeps points out, which is correct, is something we need to deal with, but really the trustees need to deal with it. So.
Hold my breath.
Why are we are giving a special permit to something that's not listed needs a special permit? Sounds like if you're going to, you know, have a business, just, just go for it. If it's not something that's listed in the, in the code, why would be giving a special permit to something that doesn't say in the code, you need a special permit for that?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't like to fudge. You know, I like to be precise.
Yeah.
I, I think, I certainly think if the yogurt, the yogurt store came second, then, then Smash Burger doesn't really need a variance because it's the yogurt store. second, then, then Smash Burger doesn't really need a variance, because it's the yogurt store that came second.
I, I think that's right, but we, I don't know if the, the yogurt store came second. I don't think any of us is certain, even if some of us think that might be true.
Yes, but we could, we could find out, and so we could, we could, you know, the next month.
I think, I think, but the hearing was closed, so we, that information is not in the record. I think the appropriate thing is, Rob, to figure out, take up your suggestion and figure out what the implications are and figure out a solution.
But if it's going to be very complicated, or there's a problematic, then maybe we, the fallback is, as is, right? Just an extension.
But at, at the end of the day.
Memorialize the erroneous aspect of.
At, at the end of the day, all restaurants are food service establishments and have to comply with Article 10 special permits. So.
Um, and hopefully by next meeting, we can find out whether or not it was existing prior to the other ice cream store opening up, whether it came first or not.
Okay.
Okay. So, Rob, you'll draft something, we'll think about, you'll think about all the implications, and we'll go from there?
Sounds good.
Okay. Next item is 504, the park.
Want to go back to the top of the list?
Oh, right, you didn't do 10 for it. I don't know, I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, remember you took it out of order. Okay, let's do chopped. I have a lot of comments on the draft application. I mean, the draft resolution, a lot of comments, so.
Before we get into the resolution itself, could we have a sense of, of where we are? Because I was surprised to get that resolution before we had been able to deliberate or discuss.
As was I, as was I, which is one of the reasons I had so much.
If, if we could take the resolution away and we could have a discussion of the board first, thank you very much. Thanks. I would like to know. I have made, raised the point during the public hearing last time, that I am holding that this is a carryout restaurant and not a restaurant. As a carryout restaurant, it is, we, it is not permitted to have the car service. And so that would definitely change some aspects of the resolution that we should end up with. So I think first, maybe could we tackle that decision as to whether this is a restaurant, as it is claiming to be, as the applicant is naming itself? Or is it a carryout restaurant? Because that has a lot of implication as to where we're going to go with the resolution.
I think they made a case for the fact that this will not be like other chopped, and they will have more in restaurant, in, in-house, in restaurant, what inside eating than most chopped do. And therefore, based on that, I am perfectly fine with considering it a restaurant. If we are considering, if, if we wanted to call it a fast food or fast casual or carryout, whatever it is you're suggesting, we are saying to them, we don't believe you, even though we don't have any evidences to not. We're just discussing it with them. And a carryout restaurant is, since just, we just made the distinction of why Smash Burger was a carryout, it's fairly different from Smash, I mean, I don't know, maybe a business enterprise primarily engaged in the retail sale of food or beverages. All food or beverages are sold at retail, so it's a little bit strange, which may include grocery items. They don't have grocery items for consumption off the premises. And they are saying that this chopped will be operated in a way in which the food is going to be primarily sold for consumption on the premises, or though there will also be consumption off the premises. So. I don't know. Anyway, I'm perfectly happy with considering it a restaurant, based on the way they say they want it to operate. They hope that this will operate.
I said, I said, I'm sorry, I'll just finish up, Brett, real quick. And the last public hearing that we, we had when we were, I, I made the point in the last public hearing that in the hearing before, we specifically asked, what were the percentage of operations were they expecting? Were they anticipating? How much would be eaten? They said about a third. So that's from the applicant. Yes, I guess it's different from chopped. That, that's sort of a very vague analogy. We don't even know what other chops do, but said, two thirds would be takeaway, one third would be eaten. Right there, we have, if we're going to believe what the applicant has presented to us, that is the proof that is majorly a takeout restaurant and not eat-in service. Eat it, you know, order there and eat it. Sorry, Brett, I jumped on your comment.
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree with Meg. Primarily is a takeout, you know, they, they admitted that. You have to judge takeout by, by revenue, their revenue, and their revenue is coming. So I, and in terms of what they hope the restaurant will be in terms of being more of a sit-in, that's totally speculative. They provided no, no evidence to suggest that really that was going to be the case. And even if they got their, their best projections as a sit-in restaurant, it's still one third sitting. So I, I really don't see how they've met the definition of, of a restaurant.
Dave, you have any thoughts?
What, an unrelated one, less complicated one. There's a reference when I read this, which wasn't, this was earlier, to their not being able to utilize the the counter, the outside opening. You're, you know what I'm referring to?
The drive-up, the car service window.
I, I would just like somewhere in there indicating that they have not, and that they have not asked for a variance from that. Because they never did, and I had once discussed this with Charlie, because the issue would come up, is it an area or a use variance? And based on the code, it's based upon state law, it's a dimensional issue, a physical issue, not a use issue. But I don't really care, but they never, it didn't come up, because I don't think they ever asked for one.
What do they need a variance for?
Well, if they wanted to.
Besides the yards, of course, I'm not talking about the yards, but you're talking about something else.
Yes, I believe that in here, and I don't, I can't put my finger on this, man. They had indicated there was a big discussion, can they use the outside service? Can they open that, there's a, an opening there, right?
In their new plan, they were not asking to be able to do transactions through that window?
That's correct. I just, I just don't, I just don't want it to be, there's an implication that they cannot do that. We have no rights to that. We have a right. I believe it's an area variance issue, but they've not asked for it. And I just wanted that indicated that they hadn't asked for it, because.
I'm not sure, David, they didn't ask for it. They said they're not going to use the window. They're just going to use where that is as a sort of a door, and they're going to go through their car service from that area. I'm not sure why we need to say they didn't ask for something they didn't ask for. They didn't ask for lots of things.
Well, didn't we discuss, I, I guess, if you could, maybe, let me just look at the, the proposed resolution. But I thought there was a place that said they couldn't use it as a condition. I had put it in my notes on the earlier one, but I don't seem to have it.
Condition number one, the applicant shall not operate drive-through service or counter-drive-through service on the premises.
But they didn't ask for count for drive-through.
The applicant shall not. Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. I would have put down as no, no, and, and no application to, for variance was granted. I think that they were under the impression that they had to get a use variance.
No, they didn't apply it for, but they didn't.
No, I know, but they talked, when they talked about it. I understand what you're saying. I, I mean, I can live with it this way.
Go back to the, the point of the distinction. Are we going to write a resolution for if we are so inclined to approve it or deny? Are we writing it as a restaurant or as a carryout restaurant? Because that directly will result in whether or not we're discussing car service at all or not. So that's why I thought before we get too far down the road, if we could make that distinction. So Dave, how do you come out on the, on the question of whether it's carryout restaurant or a regular traditional sit-down restaurant? Or which term it means?
I gotta think about that one. I've never quite, this is, but I just, from my standpoint, this is a moving target application. I've never quite, you know, it's sort of like, what? Meg, you're saying it should be, it does not fit, it's a takeout, is that right?
It is a carryout, because they describe their operations as being two thirds takeaway. They anticipate two thirds will be takeaway, and one third will be that you're, they are going, someone's going to come up, order there, and then sit at the, at the table, and someone will deliver their meal to them. That will be a third of their business, and two thirds of their business will be some form of people ordering to take away and eat, consume off the premises.
Then it sounds to me like it's probably more of a takeaway restaurant, takeout, right?
It's, yeah, I think it's carryout.
Carryout. I mean, I think that's, that's, you're right, that's what they say.
I think they said both. I think the last, prior to the last meeting, they had been less specific about how much they thought was going to be. I got the impression that more was going to be sit-down than they did say at the last meeting. My, I, I am very concerned about, you know, leaving aside, there were lots of problems with this application, but I'm sort of concerned about the fact that we proceeded down a certain path with their application, didn't suggest to them at any point during their application that maybe this wasn't a restaurant, that this was a carryout restaurant, and therefore we wouldn't give them the car service. And I, I, you know, we can decide that it's not a carryout, and I don't know that I disagree that it's, I think it's one of, another one of these, every one of these restaurants is a little different. But the way that these things happen, which is that we have a hearing, and then we discussed it. And in the discussion, we raised something that was not at all pointed out, discussed, or raised, do we really during?
I remember distinctly.
It just seems to me a little bit problematic.
But I distinctly remember, I definitely raised it in the last public hearing, because you, you took me to task that I was wrong. So I kind of a little sensitive about that. I absolutely do remember that I did review that. And I believe that Creta was actually, Brett, you'll have to speak for yourself, but was also raising the point that she was asking the proportionality and, and asking for the operation. So I, I disagree, and that's why I purposely raised it and, and was trying to have a discussion with them about these two terms. So I for sure was discussing that in the public hearing and gave them the chance. We, we think, we're thinking about this resolution as taking like a year. This particular last design that they gave us, before us maybe three times. So we can't, yes, we were going down a different path. We were, they were not calling themselves a restaurant originally. Then they were a restaurant, but they were going to have a window. And then, and we closed one application, and then they came back. So it isn't as though we've had a lot of discussion and never talked about the difference. It's actually out of the last three. I think that Brett raised some points, and then definitely the last hearing that we had. I definitely was very, I said that I was asking them why they're not a carryout, and that I felt that they were a carryout.
Yeah, I, I think at least two, three months ago, I asked questions about the anticipated proportionality of takeout versus sit-in. And then I asked, followed it up, and then the last session, Meg more explicitly said, and they kept repeating it, you know, at no point in my recollection did they ever indicate that they were even at a 50% mark. It was always going to be a major, a majority was always going to be takeout. But it was then at the last session that Meg was quite explicit in saying, yeah, you've been saying this all along, you don't meet the definition of a restaurant. So I think they certainly have, they had noticed that these were questions being asked. We were concerned, and then Meg was explicit about why it was important.
There's no question that at the last meeting, Meg asked the question, and they were very clear that a third was.
But before that last meeting, it was.
Actually, before that last meeting, I was, as I said, I was under the impression, and I was very surprised when they said only a third, because I'd gotten the impression all along that they were trying to change this from, you know, primarily takeout to primarily sit-in. And that's how they were setting this up, so.
Perhaps one option would be to, perhaps one option would be to approve it as a restaurant, but make clear that it's approved on the condition that it meets the definition of a restaurant and a restaurant only, and that its primary purpose is not carryout, so that you're in a sense, conditioning it to be a restaurant as opposed to a carryout restaurant.
The problem, well, I, I think that's a good idea, Rob, but here's the problem. We are still in the pandemic, and many, many restaurants are still having primarily takeout. I mean, you know, you go to any, a lot of restaurants, and they're not going to be full inside. You know, the, you know, a certain percentage of, of the service is going to be takeout as a practical matter. And so I think it'll be very hard to to, to, to measure it for, at some point, I, I, you know, otherwise I think it's a good idea. And, and Meg may be right, that this is a carryout restaurant based on what they said at the last meeting.
We could approve it as a carryout, and then if they can prove to us at some point that actually that we're wrong, that their business is primarily a sit-in, then they can come back and say.
And amend it.
Or if it evolves, if it's after the pandemic, it evolves and.
That's a good idea, Greta. I think you had, that's a good suggestion. And the basis for that decision would be that they said to us, one third is going to be eaten, and two thirds are going to be takeout in some form.
Right, so.
So we're going to say it's a carryout, but they can come back at some point when there's, they have.
I think the resolution should explain that while they have applied for a restaurant with car service based on the information provided at the hearings, there's only, they, they only anticipate one third of the of the food being so, the, the food that, with that only one third will be done inside the restaurant at a table or counter, which makes the principal use not restaurant use, but carryout use. And therefore, based on that, they can't have the car.
That one third will be served to them at a table. It's not just, you got a paper bag, and then you went over and sat down, as opposed to be.
Seated at a table, seated at a table, served by a waiter or waitress and consumed on the.
That has to be beyond, beyond 50%.
Yeah. Okay.
Are you going to make it subject to their ability to come in and change that if you change?
I don't think we need to say that. I think if we lay it out, the reason we're doing it this way, and they're probably listening to us right now. I don't think we need to say they can always come in and change it, if in fact, in a year or two years, they discover that, in fact, they're mostly that they're getting a lot of people in, they can come in and tell us that. I don't think we need to make the, the, because we're not making a conditional, it's not like we're saying you automatically get it. Are we? I think we're saying they have to come back to us. If they have to come back to us, I don't even think we need to say in the resolution that they do.
Well, the only thing is, if you're, if you're going to give them permission to come back, otherwise somebody could say, well, why are you coming back? You've already got this, and you know, we're not going to consider it. I don't, it's up to you.
So then we can say in the resolution, after we explain what the problem is, we can say, because of the evidence they presented, and if they have at any time, any evidence that they are in fact a restaurant with most of the food and beverages being consumed at a table and served by a waiter or waitress, then they would be entitled to the car service, or they would be entitled to ask for the car service.
So perhaps as with the last application, we'll do a draft resolution, circulate it. Can talk about it. No decision will be made tonight. Once we agree on the resolution, you can vote on the resolution.
Well, you can, okay, on timing on this?
The hearing, the public hearing was closed on. Was it closed? Hold on, I have my count, my.
Know that there was a plea from the applicant that we do this.
Yeah.
We don't delay, that we heard quite a bit about, that they didn't want to delay.
The public hearing was closed, I believe, at the last meeting, so timing is not an issue. But I know that they were very concerned, because they wanted to open. So if we vote, I think we can take a. Take a. I, I rather than take a vote on an actual resolution that we don't have, I would rather take a straw poll now. On what it is so the applicant knows how we're. Pretty, almost certainly going to vote and with, and then we actually vote on it at the next meeting.
I, I just wanna stress that the actual decision would not be tonight.
But at least he would know how we were leaning, so. I would say that, can we have a vote on, I'm gonna propose, again, this is not a vote within a second. But I'm gonna propose that we vote on to approve it as a. Restaurant carryout based on the evidence they've given us and recognizing that if more of the restaurant is in fact. A table waitress, waiter service, they can come and get their car service and that we're approving the variances they've requested.
Yeah, so we're, we're approving, so that we're, we would approve a special permit as a carryout restaurant and not. Approve the car service, let's make that clear.
Right.
And then.
But we're also approving the variances because that's a.
Approve the variance. I also, I had raised something, I'll just raise it. I had raised something in an earlier application, an earlier version of this application. Not lately, so let me just share with you my concern and perhaps there's nothing to be done. But originally we were given a site plan that showed the, something that they were going to utilize the freestanding sign. That's in the front of the lot that was left over from the bank. I did raise that, that I don't think that that zoning compliant. And that in the materials that they had provided, there was definitely a sign permit, but no variance had been approved for this. And now this new one, we're not getting a complete site. We don't see the sign, they don't. They're just not giving us a views elevations and putting the sign in there. I don't know whether they intend to utilize that sign. But if they wants to utilize that sign, I can quote the code here, why I believe that they would need a variance. In order to be able.
I, they're not here for a, for a sign variance, we're not approving any sign here. Approving the site plan for the restaurant, so I'm not sure why we need to say anything about the sign. They will have to get the sign approved by the building inspector and either he will find it compliant or he will find it noncompliant.
But is it on the, is it on the site plan? Is it on the site plan?
It was on the original site plan.
But it's not on the current site plan, is it? And we're proving it based on the current site.
Not, it not is or not, they're just not adding that part of any of the elevations that I got. So I will just cite two eighty-six dash eleven B freestanding signs. As, as those are the regulations as to why, uh, someone is permitted a freestanding sign if the building department is.
I don't think it's relevant and I don't think we should discuss it. It's not on the site, the, the site plans that we have most recently been given, we're not approving it. And will be up when and if they do wanna use it, it'll be up to the village and building inspector. To determine whether the freestand, they can use the freestanding sign or not.
I had originally brought it up when it truly was in front of us and we were looking at, they gave us all the sign information, it was all in the packet that we had.
Okay. Okay, so again, going back to what I was suggesting, which is a straw poll to approve it as a fast casual based on the evidence that they provide. I'm sorry, a, a restaurant carryout, sorry, I. Based on the evidence they provided and the definitions and that's how we would approve it and therefore they couldn't have car service.
I think Rob's, is, is restaurant comma carryout?
Yeah, that's what is in the code.
Yeah, I mean.
I think that's just for. Think we can say carryout restaurant.
Okay, uh, uh, what is everyone, Meg? David, you're saying yes?
I would approve a special permit for it as a, as a, uh, carryout restaurant. Denied the car service as a result because it's not permitted as a carryout restaurant. And yes, uh, the language that if they come back and they evolve their services and it becomes more than. Fifty percent of their businesses is as a restaurant, they could come back and ask to review for the cars.
Well, and we're approving the variances, which is also, you've always. Three variances, so we're proving.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I would vote in favor of that.
Okay, Greta? And David?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a straw poll, so the applicant can see pretty much how we are intending to vote. On the application. And Rob, if you would draft a. Okay. Next application, so we've done. The next one would be five oh four, the Parkway.
So I have to recuse Robin.
I thought the next one is SP twenty twenty-three oh eight Mamaronek Avenue, am I wrong?
You are wrong. Oh, I'm looking. Wait a minute, sorry, I have, I have notes on my app, I have notes on my agenda. And they, they have this taken because I got confused by how you started it. So you are right and I am wrong. It is, the next one is eleven SP twenty twenty-three oh eight Mamaronek Avenue.
Which is?
Which is, um, Barquilla. And what does everyone think?
Am I missing? Do we have the resolution on that one?
No.
No, th- this was the one, if you recall, there was some case law discussion. Relative to whether or not it was legitimate to regulate hours of operation. Yeah, a- and, and I think the consensus was that.
It is.
The board cannot regulate hours of operation just for the sake of regulating hours of operation as a business. But it can to the extent that there are potential land use implications and impacts. Provided there's evidence demonstrating the fact that there could be an impact.
I, I have, to, to me, um, we talked about the hours because that's what they wanted to do and they wanted to go. So they, the applicant seeking amendment to extend the hours ten thirty AM to ten thirty, Monday through Thursday to ten o'clock PM. Friday and to eleven, at Friday and Saturday to eleven thirty. I thought he wanted to go much later than that.
I think those are his current hours and if you look at the, what I'm reading here on the agenda.
Oh, right, to ten, two AM. I think two AM we discuss, is much later than any other restaurant is allowed on Mamaronek Avenue. And I am not in favor of it and I would make the hours based on the fact that there are residents, even if there's no resident immediately above this. There are nearby residents and I would not, and I think that the impact on Mamaronek Avenue or on the residents is. Is potentially not.
Do we have some information as to the, the relative location of those residents?
Yeah, they're throughout the village.
The residents above everything on Mamaronek Avenue.
Yeah, and it's a, the whole village, it would change the character of the neighborhood if you had every, because if they can be till two AM, everybody can be. And all the residents will be deeply impacted by that.
So, um, I'm, I think these hours are too late. I think we can make them later and make them more consistent with what other. Restaurants are on Mamaronek Avenue, but two AM is much later than. Other restaurants are.
I would suggest one AM for the weekend hours for sure.
What was it up, what's it been up to now?
Eleven thirty PM.
What other, um, restaurants in the area are, um, have hours up to one AM? Is that, is that consistent with, um, the surrounding food establishments?
That's what I was trying to remember, I don't remember what others have. Sal's, which is the closest, is open, I think till midnight when they're, oh, in their normal course, not till later, but that's not a regular restaurant.
The Italian restaurant, um, across the street, way up on the avenue towards the Boston Post Road. Um, we did a lot with the hours on that one. I'm sorry, I remember the name.
Do you remember what they are? Yeah, that's what I'm trying to remember and I don't, let me see if I can, let me see if I can find any in my notes.
Probably get a database where you have the, an aerial and you, you know, the times and everything, because that, you're right, that's.
That's a really, yeah, that would be a really good.
I, I say, if, if something is already operating until twelve. And this business owner has come to us and said it, it needs to stay open in terms of viability of his business. The hit, the success of his business, I don't think that one o'clock is that much later, it's gonna really tremendously change. The character of the avenue if this one goes till one AM. But I would add a condition, um, that the doors and windows be closed at say. Eleven thirty or we pick a time and I know that the applicant was fine with that, so that. The noise is basically confined to inside, um, and so it's not impacting.
Problem is if you go till one o'clock, you're gonna be effectively doing one thirty by the time they close up.
Um, well, remember what we're saying is, we have, there's two, the question is, when we decide those hours, what is it we're saying that hours mean? Is that the hours that we're saying that all the custo, I think what we're saying is customers have to be out of the restaurant at that time. And if that's what we're saying, then I think one o'clock is probable, might be okay. But I noticed that, um, Station Plaza just as, um, only is open till eleven thirty. I, that's, I'm just looking at resolutions that I found, I can't necessarily find every resolution, but here's some resolutions I have on my. Computer, which is all I'm doing is I'm looking to see what I could find. And.
You're looking.
So I found Station Plaza and that is till eleven thirty. So looking, and so I'm looking at other, I'm just looking it up to see if I see anything else, so. I don't have everything on my computer.
I was gonna say, I was, I feel very uncomfortable. This owner that he can't have people in his space. Can be there, who can't be there. I can see that we can say, we don't want you to encourage more business transactions or that you have business transactions. The fact that. That you're gonna chase out your customers is a terrible thing to do to, as owner or running a restaurant. I feel very uncomfortable. I don't think we're supposed to be telling, uh, you know, it has to have an environmental impact. I feel like that is, it's, it, that's an overreach to tell someone that you have to, you'll get fined. Or you will be in violation if you didn't kick your customers out. I have, I have a real problem with that.
Nona Corolla, I found, I have a resolution, but I'm not sure if it's a draft or the adopted resolution. In fact, it has to be a draft, but it says eleven PM as well. So, um, I think one, based on looking at those, and again, I know that Station Plaza is correct. I don't know what Nona Corolla is, but, uh, I think that one AM is, no, I would not be happy with allowing people with, doing anything other. If we're gonna say one AM, it has to be, everybody has to be out of the restaurant. And they can easily make sure that people are out of the restaurant by, for example, deciding that they're not gonna continue. They're gonna close their kitchen at eleven thirty or twelve, we're not telling them what time. And based on the fact that they closed their kitchen and their bar at eleven thirty or twelve, people aren't gonna sit around for two hours. People will eventually leave, so we either have to tell them what time they have to close their kitchen, which doesn't guarantee. Or, and or we have to tell them what time customers have to be out, but we do need to tell them one of those things.
My, I would suggest consideration of. Cause i- if you make it one o'clock and they don't close on time, by the time anybody really knows, it's one fifteen, one thirty. So I would rather say twelve thirty and they have to close by one. That way. You've got momentum in that. If they're starting to serve at quarter to one, people are gonna be able to call someone, I guess. But I'd say if you want them to close at one, then tell them twelve thirty and they have to close at one.
Well, then what happens at twelve thirty, David? I'm sorry, I don't understand.
I guess the kitchen stop, you stop serving.
No, no, if, if we're gonna tell them one o'clock, kitchen has to stop at midnight. As a practical matter, the kitchen has to stop at midnight because people.
Isn't, isn't, aren't we really interfering with the? I'm sorry, if I could just finish, operations of the business. If, if you say, we don't want people in the space, we want them all to have gone home for the environmental impact by a certain time. Don't we leave it up to the applicant as to when he stops to tell the applicant that when he has to stop selling, you know, kitchen closes? I would think it's in his interest if he wants to comply and everybody's supposed to leave by one, he should figure it out or she should figure it out, whoever the applicant is. But for us, it seems intrusive, or I didn't think that was, that was beyond our, 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 our powers to do. Is to actually say this is when, unless it's, the village has decided it comprehensively for, for all, for us to, to, to tell this group. You have to stop your kitchen at this hour or the bar at this hour. I don't understand the environmental impact. That we would justify that your kitchen can't go beyond twelve. We're, it means so that you'll get out by one, but don't.
It, it's appropriate to regulate the use of land to avoid a particular impact.
Yeah, we don't have, we're not deciding that there's an environmental impact per se. What we're saying is there is an impact on the community. I would not like the restaurant to be told any later than twelve thirty. I think twelve thirty is late enough, given what I'm, I've discovered from other nearby restaurants. Because based on what I'm discovering, that means every other restaurant is gonna come back and ask to be there till twelve thirty. And there's a lot of restaurants on Mamaronek Avenue, so.
I, I'm, I'm not so sure on, on that, that, that definitely we could have more late closing restaurants, I understand that. But all of the other ones have, we've never had to reduce their hours, that's just what they came in, that's just what they wanted, they wanted eleven o'clock, they were.
No.
No, we've had Molly Spillane's and others.
My time on the board, the, I know Nona Corolla, they didn't ask for later and then we, we curbed the hours. You know, so that's, my, I'm sorry, so I should, I should. Qualify that as the years that I've been on the board. I, I can't remember on Mamaronek Avenue that somebody asked for a late time. And then we, we told them they couldn't stay open as late as they want.
Yeah, we've had.
The interior of their operations, I know.
There's been many applications that we told they had to close earlier on Mamaronek Avenue.
If you're gonna make Mamaronek Avenue so people are up until one, the whole street, you've effectively affected. All the residences, the residents.
Yeah.
That's a big step. I mean, it's not like, and it's a huge jump, because what are they up to now? They're eleven now?
But you told me Sal's is open till twelve, so we have a business.
What's this open till now?
Eleven or eleven thirty.
Right. See, I would be comfortable with twelve thirty, but, and then.
I'm okay with twelve thirty.
Doors closed by one. Cause I think the realistic part is you have to stage it because they're human beings and they're out there, because everybody, they could stay open later, Mike. I think this way, they know that, I'm sorry, we're closed, but you can stay for another half an hour. That's a lot more friendly than it is saying, okay. No food and you're up. And I, I hear what you say, Robin, about closing the kitchen at twelve, but I don't know. That's sort of many managing.
I would say that they have to be closed at twelve thirty. That customers, what we've said, the way we've worded it, and here's the language from Nona Corolla. Uh, redo the language. That the windows and doors must be closed no later than ten PM on Sundays through Thursdays. Oh wait, that's not, that the restaurant's hours of operation for customer service shall be no later than ten PM on Sunday through Thursday. And no later than eleven PM on Friday and Saturday. That is the hours on, for Nona Corolla. And that's the language that the restaurant's hours of operation for customer service, that's the language that we've used. So I think, given that that is the language you use, and I think that's the same language we have on. And that was granted Meg while you were on the board and the reason Nona Corolla didn't come for longer hours is because we had significantly reduced the. Molly Spillane came in with one time, we reduced it, then we reduced it a second time because of the noise and the impact on the avenue. So Nona Corolla, so the hours of operation for customer service. So I think that's the language we should use and I would not be willing to do it past eleven thirty. And I'm just letting you know that I am, on Friday and Saturday, not on Sunday through Thursday.
So what would you, can you help me?
Thirty for which, which?
I said twelve hours of operation for customer service shall be no later than whatever time they wanna begin. Through twelve thirty on Friday and Saturday nights. That's the latest I would be.
The other night, and what about the other nights?
Well, again, based on others, I think that. I think eleven o'clock is as late, we, everything else on weekdays, we've made ten o'clock. I don't see why we should not make it ten o'clock here. I, I really have a problem with opening the restaurants later. We have a lot of residents on Mamaronek Avenue. And again, other restaurants on Mamaronek Avenue have been limited much more. On Mamaroneck Avenue, and again, other restaurants on Mamaroneck Avenue have been limited, much more limited.
And one has to assume that that will change.
Here, I'm just going off video for just a moment. I'm, I'm here. I just have to make an adjustment.
Alright, so anyway, that's my thoughts. Twelve thirty are okay on Friday and Saturday. Record not for cust- hours of service for. Customer service.
And when do people have to leave by?
Well, it says customer service. It means they can't have customer service after. So that means they can't, whatever that means. I don't know what it means, David, if you wanna know the truth. I would say that they can't serve anybody, anything after twelve thirty, if that's what we're saying. Cause that's when hours of operation for customer service.
And the doors have to be closed, and there has to be no customers in the premises after one, let's say.
I'm okay with that.
So twelve thirty is customer service and one o'clock, cause you know, people have been drinking, they'll hang out.
I, I, I agree with you both.
But we can, Friday and Saturday.
I think, I think twelve thirty service, one o'clock close. Is, is reasonable. It's, you don't wanna go. Once we do it for one, we're gonna have to do it for everybody else. And that's gonna be an environmental impact that can be detrimental.
So I, I don't think of it as an environmental impact. I think of it as a community impact. It's a real problem.
Well, but the quality of life is, is, is an environmental impact and.
Yeah, and I, I think that so now, assuming we go with that, what do we wanna do for weekdays? I think that the weekday hours at ten o'clock is what we should leave it at. You wanna make it a little later, we could, but again, we didn't for anyone else, so I'm not sure why, again, we're treating this one so differently.
What do they want that, what do they want?
Restaurant. Every other restaurant would like to be later.
Yeah, of course. What do they want, though? What, what is their request for the, during the week?
A two o'clock every day.
Me too.
Sunday through Saturday from nine AM to two AM.
We can make them earlier in the morning, give them two extra hours.
Let's not.
I would say, you know, I, I think ten thirty or something, if you want to. Would it happen at ten o'clock or the others?
Yeah, and they, this is what they have now, ten o'clock. If you wanna make it ten thirty, I'm okay with that. I would not be willing to make it later.
I'm happy, I, I'd be willing to do ten thirty and then I guess personally by eleven, yeah.
Yeah.
Again, that means everyone else is gonna be out.
Yes, right.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Alright, so I think there's three of us who wanna do that, so I'm not sure how Meg feels, but based on that, I think. Rob, if you would draft a resolution?
Yes.
You think we need one drafted for this, Rob?
Is that the only change? Can we, are we putting any conditions? Is that the only change?
I think we have the standard conditions we have for all.
And for, and I think we should discuss in the resolution the particular reasons why hours are justified in this instance.
I think it's on Mamaroneck Avenue. Mamaroneck Avenue has a lot of residential use. The noise has been a problem. Late, late, noise late has been a problem for other restaurants, and we have limited the hours. And we are extending at their request. We are giving them slightly longer hours, but we are concerned. About the impact on the quality of work. There's a lot of residents. And we're concerned about the impact of the noise on residential.
The quality of life. I think we probably have more residential units on Mamaroneck Avenue than we have commercial units.
Probably do.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, there you go.
I'm sorry, my battery had died, so I was out for just a moment or so until I got my. Computer charged up. So are you, I know you talked about when the kitchen has to close and the hours of opera, you know, when the customers have to leave. Did we discuss closing the doors and windows at some point, like on the weekend?
Sure, I, I, that's okay.
What is, what is the consensus of the board for how late the Friday and Saturday will go?
Well, we said twelve thirty for, for service and then the closing by one.
I'm fine with like eleven thirty, the doors and windows have to be closed, cause to me that, you know. Like that's again, operating and be all lit up and the customers are coming in, the doors and windows are closed, so to help.
That again is later than any other restaurant.
Yeah, I would say earlier than that, eleven. Eleven o'clock, I think. Or you could just go one hour before the same timing, so you could cover it, yeah. What about during the week? They can, that's not an issue.
Though we have any prescription for any other businesses during the week that you're, it's a sort of a.
Yeah, we do, we do.
Does Sal's have to close their window? I mean, every.
Sal's isn't the same thing. It's a very different, I used to this example.
Ask the question, are there other businesses that we, that are operating until eleven or so during the week? And have their windows open. I think there's a lot of them have, I know that there is the Asian restaurant that has the doors and windows that are. Wide open, very nice, that you go in and out. Is there any, do they close at a certain time?
Reading the Nona Corolla one, which again is the only one I have. The windows and doors must be closed no later than ten PM on Sundays through Thursdays. And no later than eleven PM on Fridays and Saturdays.
Okay, so we can make the windows and doors close at ten and to be consistent with that.
Ten on weekdays, eleven on Friday, Saturday.
Yeah. So that was the only one. It's not that it's the only one there is, but it just happens to be the one that I had.
I was referring to the Italian restaurant that was up the street on the other side that was Nona Corolla that was referring.
So. Okay, is that good? Are we good? And it will have the, the standard, the rest of the special permit requirements are our standard. Special permit requirements that we find.
Right, so this is not a straight renewal. This was an extension of ours, so are we? This is not renewing it. This is, this is.
Just amending it.
Amending the current special permit.
Right, so the special permit remains in full force and effect, except that the hours are changed to reflect the new hours.
Plus, plus the conditions in terms of closing the doors in the hours.
Right. Okay. We good? Okay, moving on to. Four, four, case number seven, SP twenty fifteen. Oh no, we did that one. So case number six, SP twenty thirteen, five oh four, the Parkway.
Jefferson Avenue.
Did I miss another one? Oh yeah, I did. The way my agenda printed out, it just. I'm confusing, you're right. I take it back. The next item is case number four, eight, twenty twenty one, five thirty nine, Jefferson. What are area variances for the pool?
The pool, right, right, right. That's the one that backs up onto the MTA.
Yeah, to sort of not, yeah, nothing. So my, my two thoughts are one point nine seven feet. From, from six to one point nine seven feet is a significant amount. But given that the back of the property is not another house, but is MTA property, which is not developed. There will be nobody living there. I don't have a problem with the signi- cause that is a significant variance. With such a significant variance, because it will not have an impact on anyone.
Yeah, I think of it as like a cliff that. You can build out as far, because you're not gonna impact anybody on the other side.
So the only other thing. We, there was a. It was very confusing, if you recall, because there was a fence which wasn't on the property line, which was actually. We're not saying anything about any of that. We just have to be careful that all we're saying is based on their property line. That's what it is.
But they were allowing this improvement within that, the rear yard. The rest is to the, the building department to make sure it's.
Whatever.
Well, it's unique, it's unique property.
Right. That's super unique. There's other properties there, I think. There are a lot of other properties who, but on. Right on the railroad. We have a big portion of the village that's on the railroad.
I guess what's unique is that they, they have sort of, their fence goes on to property that. Is MTA property, that makes it unique.
Yeah. Right, anything, anything, any other conditions or anything else, otherwise we grant the variance. And so basically, if we go through the findings, it would be that. Sorry, just looking at my findings. Normally I have them open. It is that there'll be no significant impact on the neighborhood, because there's no residential use behind them. There's no other place to put it, given the shape and size of the lot, and. As I said already, it is significant, but given that there is no residential or other use behind them. Except the MTA and it's undeveloped property and will not be developed, it is not, there will be no impact on anyone else.
Madam Chair, this is the assistant building inspector, if I can comment. So with that, that, that area in the back, that's, that's not developed currently. And we talked about the sta- the fence, you've already mentioned it, which is great, thank you. But you know, if they are to develop or use that land, chances are it won't be at that elevation anymore. It will drop out. So somewhere in the writing, we should mention that. The pool would have to remain, it can remain as the land is there, but if it gets chewed away and brought down to. Track level, let's call it. I think it's maybe fifteen, twenty feet roughly, don't hold me to it. Once that drops down, that pool will no longer be stable. If that soil is to be removed. So if they decide, you know what, we wanna, we can't maintain these tracks anymore. We wanna put a high speed track, let's hope one day they do that. But you know, they'll, they'll probably remove all of that soil and expand the width. Of the, the area. I know there was talk a while back about changing of bridges and so forth. And all that's on hold currently, but you know, if, you know, twenty years now, that pool's life will still be going strong. And if they decide that they wanna add another track and widen that area, extend the bridges, it would be affected. So, you know, in, in the variance, there should be some wording, if, if that is to occur. Then the pool should be demolished or removed. And legal can take care of the wording on that, but you know, once again, it's not their property. And granting the variance, if they, if they do remove that soil, they have the option to do that once they get the permissions to do that. So.
I, I don't know that we need to say, cause, cause I mean, to some degree, that's true for any property. If their house was built further back and, and the MTA. Reduce their, assume, you know, assuming they could reduce the, do what you suggested they do. You know, could have an impact on somebody's property. So I think that all we need to say in the variance is, given the existing conditions. That, that this variance is granted based on the existing conditions of the property and MTA property behind.
And, and solely the conditions that are present, okay?
Yeah.
I don't wanna say, it has to be the present conditions. I'm not an expert. This is, we rely on the building department. Make sure that when they, they give a, a building permit, that there's some conditions in there. I don't really understand what is necessary or not necessary. We're doing the zoning impact. So I, I'm not sure why we would. If something becomes unsafe, isn't that the building apartments? It's not, that's not.
We could, we could tie the validity of the variance to the existing conditions. And that the, the variance itself could go away if those conditions change, which, which would necessitate then. Another building department review.
But, but what, to what, with the conditions, would that mean if they, they put more rocks in or? What conditions?
Well, it sounds like there's a specific concern about the elevation of the.
We would understand or know, when, when is that a problem? Is it? Two inches, I'm sure, I'm, I'm glad that the building department is on it and is aware and make everybody, all homeowners are safe. And that's, I, that's terrific to have that. I just don't see why that's a part of our zoning application. It seems like. What condition, someone could say, oh, your variance is gone because.
This, this, this sounds to me like it's a particular concern that Dennis has, that given the reduced setback. It's going to create the potential for this peril in the future, let's say. If the elevation is adjusted.
Dennis, I have a question for you. Where the, the, the six feet to one point nine seven feet is based on the dimensions of actually what they have titled to. It doesn't include the piece of land that's in the fenced area that is MTA property. So are you concerned because you thought it incurred, included MTA property? So if the MTA property, if the MTA ever did anything on their property. The, 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 the applicant here would still own up to the space that is one point nine seven feet. Beyond the pool.
Under, understood, understood. When, so the, the current, the concern is, is if a retaining wall would have to be built, right? There's a lot of what ifs, what ifs, what ifs. And if they, you know, MTA chooses to remove, you know, let's say ten feet of, of that, come back in. You know, the, the way that the pool will be structured, that I'm gonna take care of on the building permit end. You know, I'm gonna ask for, you know, thicknesses and so forth, heights, rebar and all of that to make sure we don't have any motion. But you know, I just wanted to make sure that the board is in a safe place in how you make your determination. That's where I am. It's more about getting the proper wording for the board to be in a better position with the.
Think it's an issue then. Because the board is going to grant a variance, just like it does anything else. And if there's a subsequent change that causes the conditions. On which a variance was granted to change, then. There's a change, and that doesn't mean they can come back and say, oh, you gave me a variance, so I can keep the pool. I, I don't think there's an issue there.
But what if the MTA takes the land away, but not a significant amount, but we, but now you're saying, oh, the variance doesn't work. Because it's relative, like who's gonna decide? The certain amount of conditions now have changed that they have lost their right to have the, to this variance. That's what I'm, it's too much to agree. I'm, I don't think, it just seems like it's opening it up. That some small condition could change and someone could say your variance is not, is, is not applicable anymore. And usually we give a, I, that's why it leaves the building department, what is safe. And you build it into the, the approval of the pool, that it's safe, but not the zoning part of it.
I, I don't think it's an issue either way, because all variances, all special permits are based on the conditions at the time. We grant the approval and none of that guarantees that future conditions will not be a problem. So I don't see that this is that we actually have to do anything special. Rob, I don't know if you think otherwise, but otherwise I don't think we need to do anything special.
I was just going to, I was just gonna ask Dennis if, if a particular concern could be baked into the building permit. Where if some structural scenario evolved, that would be, create an issue. That they would then have to take certain steps to address that structural instability or whatever it might be.
So in regards to the, the, the CC for the pool or the certificate occupancy for the swimming pool. I'm safe, no matter what we do, we are, we're covered. I was just worried on the end of the board. To just make sure that there's no issues if they do remove the soil. So you know, I'm gonna say you're allowed to have six feet from the property line for your swimming pool. That's where you are. If your patio is beyond that, that, that goes up to them. The fence is important, as we talked about last time, which is clear. And I'm just gonna ask for their engineer or their pool designer to specify exactly what's going in. And get steel inspections and so forth, given what the possible conditions could be. And if they choose to do that, then they will, but we, I would remove myself from that at that point, after their engineer makes the determination. Not that, not so much the pool designer, but an engineer stating that, you know, what if this happens? And yeah, as soon as that pool becomes unsafe or that property becomes unsafe. You know, that, that will be up to the homeowner to rectify that with my predecessor, you know. And, and that's where we are. So you know, this is something that's, you know, could be down the line twenty years from now, you know, not even in my lifetime. Metro North doesn't really move very quickly in any direction. So that's it. I was just looking after the board. Thanks.
Thank you. So Rob, if you think there's some language we should put in, please put it in the draft resolution.
I, I, yeah, I think as, as Dennis described, I'm, I'm okay with the situation, okay with your approach for the resolution.
I'm sorry, what, can we, could you be clear, what are we deciding to put into the resolution?
I, 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 at this point, I don't think it's necessary beyond.
Okay, thank you.
The language. It, it sounds like it's a, a building department issue, and if, if something were to happen in the future. Dennis's predecessor or his predecessor's predecessor can deal with it from an unsafe structure perspective.
All right, hopefully I'm back on, um, the right, so the next one would be Snack Burger, but we did that already. And the one after that is case number six SP twenty thirteen five oh four, the Parkway. Um, and we have, I think, a draft resolution. Yeah, and I have lots of comments on the draft resolution.
I can share my screen if you'd like, Robin.
Okay, so at this point I will, um, recuse.
Okay, thank you.
Did I share my screen, Robin?
Sure. I have to find my comments. Okay. All right, so, um, I'm going to make, give my comments. If anyone else has comments as we do, you should please stick yours in too. Um, okay, so the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, fifth whereas clause that says we got to fix the whereas, it's missing the E in.
I'm trying, I'm trying to share it, bear with me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
There we go.
Wait, something hap, oh, that's the, that's the resolution, um.
So are you on this one now, here?
So I have to look, I have to look at my draft, so I'm going to re-go for my draft. So the fifth resolu, the fifth whereas clause, which is the misspelled whereas.
Yeah, you're missing an E in your.
Okay.
Okay. The public hearing opened, was opened on this application on June third, allowing members plural of the public to speak, not speaking, on the capital A application.
I'm sorry, where, where are we?
I read again, whereas the public.
I, I, where, where are you?
It's that same clause, the same one corrected the whereas.
Right. Whereas the public hearing was opened on, it's since we've now defined it as the application, whereas the public hearing was opened on the capital A application on June third, twenty twenty one, allowing members plural of the public to speak, not speaking, on the application, capital A. And where, and okay, now the next whereas, whereas the public hearing was closed on June third. And then the next whereas, whereas the board, um, considered the application and then it talks about two meetings and the September twenty third, twenty twenty one meeting. Okay, um, and then the next where as.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, Robert.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Um. Yes, so that was one, which meeting was it that we just considered whether or not we were going to reopen?
The last meeting, September twenty third.
Are, are we absolutely certain of that? There, there hasn't been another meeting since then. So I did our, our discussion and then it came up to us, do you want to rehear? I followed the last time that we had the, the discussion. So I don't see how that could have happened if, if we actually discussed it on the twenty third. At which meeting did we just consider whether or not we were going to rehear, hear it?
At the meet, at the last meeting, the issue of whether or not we should reopen came up. And we decided that the comments were not, no, that couldn't have been because um, that would have had to have been at the.
We.
Meeting because was, 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 what's her name here at the September twenty third meeting? Amber, was Amber at the September twenty third meeting? Yeah, he must have been. So at the September twenty, um, does anyone know? Ashley, are you there?
Yeah, if it was last month or, or twenty twenty one, no, she, she finished on the fourteenth.
Okay, so then but we didn't, it couldn't have been, I don't think we had a July. Do, I don't, I don't know that it wasn't as far back as July twenty second that that issue came up. So it must have been at the September twenty third meeting that the question came up, but I don't.
September twenty third was just
two weeks ago.
Now, I believe it did come up in, in, in July. I, I think that was one of the meetings I covered.
So you, Rob, you think it was the July meeting?
Uh, this was on the agenda. Do, do we have minutes that we can check this again?
No, we have no minutes.
I, I thought, yeah, I, I don't think that we, um, we just didn't have time to get to it. This was on as a closed application. Um, and the resolution for the last meeting and we ran out of time and we just never got to it in September.
Oh, I actually, my notes from the last meeting say we, um, wait, I'm going to open my notes, hold on. Um, my notes from the last meeting say discussion, so we had a discussion. So we did discuss it at the last meeting. We discussed something about it at the last meeting. Um, my other set of notes, I have two sets of notes, sorry.
I didn't expect this change, so I'm sorry, I don't have review.
I guess we can just verify that, either, we either did or didn't. We could just figure it out. And if we didn't discuss, then we'll take out September twenty third. And if we did, it will be, and it's not a significant.
At the meeting at which, um, it was asked of us if we wanted to, um, reopen it. Does that actually fit where, because it says where the board considered the, well, I guess we considered the application. Considered the materials contained, public comment and, and deliberated. Um, is that when we, should it be separate that we then considered whether or not to reopen it? Is that wrapped up what we did when we were considering whether or not to reopen? Is that?
I don't know that it's, I don't know that it's relevant. We just turned that they were, I mean, um, um, do we need to put it in is really the question? We considered whether or not that were significant. I had thought that were signi, more. And then Amber said, no, 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 she only had like two comments and which is, we decided it wasn't worth it. So I'm not sure that it's relevant to say do it.
I thought that was at our in-person meeting. I kind of remember that. It was
Yes.
And Amber was there and we talked about whether or not to reopen.
Right.
It was the in-person meeting. And so I think we had closed it, the meeting before and.
Well, we closed it in June. I don't think that's the issue is of whether, the issue, the question now is only whether or not September twenty third.
Okay, we definitely need to check the dates on when we reviewed this.
Right, we closed it on June third and then we discussed it after that.
So we need to, we need to go back to minutes or the recordings to see what actually happened.
I was able to get the room transcript, which is, you know, a little.
I think Robin's point is we might not need to get into the granularity of whether or not the board chose to not take an action and, and reopen.
Yeah, I understand that, but I, I am just questioning whether this even came up at September twenty three.
If I'm wrong, then it was so somebody, we just need to confirm.
That's all I'm saying, is that we need to check the, the recordings.
Yeah, either one, it either, we either did or didn't. We, I have notes that we did, but if we didn't, then we didn't. Okay, um, going to the next whereas, the board doesn't find that several claim complaints were made. Several complaints, because the board, they either were or weren't. So whereas several complaints related to noise coming from events on the premises have been made a part of the record, which is bizarre language, so I actually would say were presented to the board rather than have been made a part of the record. We don't usually use that language. I just, several complaints related to noise coming from events on the premises were presented to the board at the public hearings. Think is much clearer.
We mentioned that this was a problem in the past as well with the last application or not?
I didn't, you want to add that?
Well, and that the existing status did not resolve the prior problems, similar problems raised. You might want to, it's up to you.
I don't know, if anybody else wants to do it, I don't know, it's necessary. We're just talking about the problems about this one. I don't know that we need to consider what was in the past. Cause when I change.
Well, it just shows that the, the problem's.
Okay. So then say, so then add something that says something like, whereas issues related to noise um, had previously been presented, had also been presented to the board in connections with the two thousand with, uh, uh, whatever it's called, the, the, we're, oh, sorry, I'm looking at the language. What would, were they called? The two thousand eighteen SUP renewal?
Right.
Okay.
But they, but, uh, have not, and they need, and, and need to be further mitigated at this time.
Well, I don't think we're making any, yeah, yes, we are. Okay.
So where are several.
I think that just shows you that the steps we're taking were not just based upon something this time, it's.
No, no, that's good. You're right. Okay, um.
Are we good with those edits as reflected?
Yeah, you want David to repeat what he said?
I'm, I'm sorry, did I miss something else?
No, I don't know. I said, and you know, I think what you said, what Robin said was in the problems with the noise existed, you know, were addressed previously in the prior app, application, but further steps are necessary to mitigate the same. Because, uh, but, but.
I think you just put it part of the last whereas, whereas issues related to noise had previously been raised in connection with the twenty eighteen eighteen SP renewal and, um, continue to be a problem. Or something like.
And we're need, and, and we're need a further mitigation because they contain, you know, something like that. He picked the words. That to Rob.
Persistent complaints?
I think that the idea is that they, this has always come up. And particularly, I remember the people next door, they've been before us twice already on this. And it's just like, we're not just picking on these people. This, this problem needs to be addressed. Now, we've done several ways of doing, where do you deal with the, the person who has to be on the premises?
We have to get into that. It's not here yet. It's one of the changes that has to be made.
I, I would just say recurring complaints rather than persistent.
Yeah, yeah, recurring.
Okay, um, now moving along then, there's another whereas, then it says, now therefore be it resolved that after duly reviewing the application and related materials and considering the same, the board hereby grants the application's request for renewal of the, not renewal of the renewal, renewal of the special permit to op, operate the club on the premises and the next resolved.
Subject to the, subject to the conditions contained herein.
Correct, it doesn't need the other result, resolved. Cause we've just granted it here. Okay, so, uh, the special permit renewal shall be valid for a period of two years beginning today, because today's when we're going to vote. Um, that the following conditions, it's not that they shall remain in full force and effect.
I'm, I'm sorry, Robin, just before we go on. I thought it was exact, is it exactly two years? We wanted it to be September. Is that correct if we, oh. Remember we had, we had a certain number of months, um, that we were trying to have it come up.
So what do you want to do about?
Maybe that's correct, because we're now, it's October. If we file this, this month, then that would make it September, but I just remember that was our discussion.
Then let's make it September thirtieth, because when, usually we do it based on the date we vote. So why don't we just do it at the end of the month, since we didn't vote on the twenty third? You're right, we did talk about September. That's when we wanted it to end. Cause I don't know, hold on, the, the last resolution was granted on July twelfth, twenty eighteen. So I don't think the dates, if we went from July, we're not going to July, we're going through the whole year. So I would say, how about September thirtieth and leave it at that, which cuts you through all of September. Does that work, Meg or David?
Does it matter at all that their other, their, their last special permit had expired? There's a gap there. Does that matter?
No, because they'd applied. We always, we always.
I, I understand that we, yes, but does it matter that it, it means that they're actually, they applied, but there was really no special permit in force if one expired and now we're saying that we're not backing it up, that it was good as of the date that the other one expired? I just wondered, it seems like there's a gap now where they were, had no special permit at all.
I don't think, I, I don't think that's an issue that's common. I think the bigger question though, which you, which you, you, you may not have realized you raised, but the question that you actually raised is the last special permit, hold on. They asked for, no, they just asked for renewal. So I think we're renewing it for, for a period to expire on September thirtieth. It didn't lapse, nothing lapsed. We have always taken the position that a special permit continues until, if they've applied the four months before for a renewal, then we're still, then we don't treat it any differently. Most people have a gap between when we actually, not most people, it often occurs that we have that gap between when the special permit expires and when we actually vote.
Should we say, rather than saying when it, when its validity commences, should we just say when it expires?
Yes.
And I, I'm sorry to continue this discussion, because we had a long discussion about it. If the idea is that we, I thought we were thinking about, we wanted them to have two summers.
Right.
So we know, but it has to be filed four months, so that would be June.
Right.
We, we knew that they could file, we may not make a decision, but that actually seems the beginning. So I'm thinking that perhaps we push it out a little bit, because the point was that we would have two summers and then have comments on how things went for two summers. And it just seems if we got it in June, actually, it would be before the summer is really taken off.
So you're suggesting, if I understand, Meg, you're suggesting rather than have it run until, let's say, September thirtieth, we have it run in October or November?
Yeah, I actually think November, because it needs to be filed four months.
Well, why don't we make it filed less? Why don't we do it differently? We can make it file three months in advance. Make it end of October. I don't want to wait till November. I would make.
Let's say October, but three months prior to October.
That's fine. So when we get to that, let's go, so we get to that point, Meg. Let's, let's talk about, okay, so moving on, so this special permit shall be valid, you're at this, shall be valid for a period of um, for a period expiring on October thirtieth, twenty twenty one, with the renewal application having to be made by applicant no less than three months prior to the expiration date.
So, so we say, so expires of October thirty first, two thousand twenty three?
Yeah, sorry, I said twenty one, but yes, I did wrong here, yeah.
With the renewal application, uh, I'm sorry, three months?
Three months. Okay, so then we were that the following condition.
Expires, I think it expires, oh, renewal term expires with an S.
That the following condition shall apply. Not shall remain in full force and effect. Okay, so A, hours for organized events held inside the clubhouse shall be, take out the amended to be, and it should just be.
I'm sorry, Rob, Rob, she made, Robin made a comment on B.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Edition sell.
Oh, has he moved on? I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm looking at mine.
Went really fast and he can't find which, which line.
Oh, I'll, I'll slow down, Rob, just, okay, so now I'm on B. That the following condition shall apply. Do you see that? Not shall remain in full force and effect. And then the, the small A under B would be hours for organized events held inside the clubhouse shall be, take out the amended to be. It's just shall be no greater than as follows.
Got it. Okay, I'm caught up.
Okay, then moving.
Those are hours, are those the hours that they currently have?
Yes, we didn't change them.
Yes.
Um, okay, then moving on to B, little B, that all organized event shall be conducted in strict compliance with SAP, SAPC house rules. And I think that we previously said, but apparently not, as previously provided to the board, because at the last time they were here, um, Meg had specifically asked for a copy of those rules and we got a copy of those rules. And those are the rules on which we approve this based on those rules. So we don't want it just to be any rules. So I think it's the rules as, as provided to the board. Um, so house rules as provided to the board, comma, which are to be enforced by the, you know, SAPC Board of Directors. Okay, um, then moving, if you're caught, caught up, Rob?
Yes, if you're okay. Yes, if you're okay with what I wrote for B.
Oh, let me look, all right. Has provided to the board. It was not as part of this renewal application as part of the, uh, twenty-one, the, the application for the twenty-one of, of the twenty eighteen, uh, renewal.
I thought it was when you just said, I asked for the rules and they supplied.
The last time for the twenty eighteen renewal.
Oh.
That's when you asked for them and that's when we got them. We didn't get them this time.
Okay.
Those are records, those are records of the.
We had, it was in the record. Okay, so Ashley posted on chat that, uh, she has the Zoom transcript and the discussion on the park, it was just to hold discussion for the next meeting. I did remember it was discussed, but, but so, so.
Is that a discussion that we decided?
No, we should take that, that's not a discussion.
I can share it, but it's, you know, it's the Zoom transcript, so some of the words are a bit off. But.
I don't think it's, um, a, 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 um, I don't think it's a, uh, a discussion, so we should take it out, even though I put it in, it shouldn't be in. Um, okay, so moving now to small to little H.
Okay.
It's the, it says.
I'm sorry, can, can we go a little bit slower?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, go ahead. I had no comments, but if.
Just for a moment, go slowly. I couldn't find this resolution before, and so I'm looking at it now.
Okay.
If you scroll down a little bit farther, Rob, so I could just read a bit. Okay, I, I don't know where this fits in, but I thought we, I, I know that Dave and I had discussed about music outdoors and such, and perhaps that should fit in E, that no organized events. Separate letter that, um, you know, and we could go down to where your next comment. But I don't know where we should put in the fact that we had talked about the condition that there is um, no amplified sound is allowed outdoors and.
It didn't say.
Until ten. Am I missing something? I'm sorry.
Yeah, C says that during organized events held inside the clubhouse, there shall be no outdoor live music or amplified sound.
Okay, this doesn't make sense, cause it sounds held inside the clubhouse.
I think, I think we should change it then, Meg, but it doesn't need a different one. It should say that, that during organized events there shall be Romanate.
It's not even, it's not even during organized events.
Yeah, it's during events.
I'm sorry, it was organized events in terms of the club organizing and not sponsored. They had like two tiers. Can we just say?
Events.
There'll be no outdoor live music.
That's fine.
Yeah, during events, right?
Yeah.
But anytime, that like, somebody just having a game, they can.
Well, we didn't really discuss whether.
We did talk about, and we did talk about acoustic, see, I think we munged this, we were thinking it was the clubhouse.
This is good.
Outside. I thought, I looked, I looked at our notes and we thought acoustic music until ten P M outside and no amplified sound at any time outside. But this is, this is.
No, this doesn't.
I'm sorry, and this was definitely intended to be about the clubhouse. Um, I don't know why outdoor, I would not, I would believe the, not delay that during organized events. I would just take out outdoor, that there, um, shall be no ampli, I don't know, this is a really munged paragraph here.
I don't think we ever said that they couldn't have amplified music inside the clubhouse.
No, I'm not saying.
This, this deals with.
Yeah, outside.
But are we talking, and, and C, are we talking about inside clubhouse or outside? I think.
Outside.
Outside, but it says no live music, even if.
Let's go, slow down, slow down. C says, organize. Hold on. Organized events held inside the clubhouse. That's what we're describing here. Nothing to do with outside events. That during organized events held inside the clubhouse.
That's wrong, you're right, you're right.
Shall be no lot, there, there shall be, so that one, the next one doesn't fit. All windows shall be shut, prevent noise at a certain time or amplified sound, something, but this is, it munged the two for sure.
So you wanna.
But it's, I'll point out that also, you see, E says, no outside organized events are permitted after nine P M. So the point here was inside organized events are, I, are, can be much later.
Okay, I think C is about inside events.
It is.
Windows and doors and amplified sound.
Right.
And we say, inside the house. Else, so that during or events and held that, I'll just say it, but it should be whenever there is live music or amplified sound inside the clubhouse.
Right.
Doors and doors must be shut, I guess, at all times or by ten P M. What do we wanna say?
I, I think, I think ten P M, I don't think we're nine P M, because we talk about no outside events are permitted after nine P M. So it seems to me that that's when we should stop, we should make the doors and windows closed.
Robin, should I just get rid of Roman numeral one here? Is that?
Yeah, I think that's right, that during organized events held inside the clubhouse, there shall be, cause you don't have outdoor live.
That, that.
Yeah, I think that's.
It's not that during, but it's.
It's, it's.
When, when there is music or amplified sound during an organized event held inside the clubhouse, all windows and doors shall be present, will be shut to prevent noise emanating at nine P M.
Do you need to say organized events, or can you say that when there is amplified music inside in the clubhouse?
When there is in.
Right, the, the window.
Just take it out, just take out everything and the, and close and just leave in Romanate two that says all windows shall be, that when they're, oh no, that's fine, when there is amplified.
Where am I seeing, where am I missing this?
I'm sorry, I'm, Rob, I'm sorry, there's a lot of people shouting at you right now, but when there is amplified sound, it's not just music, it could be, uh,
Amplified music or sound. I would leave it in, musical performers, some musics.
How about amplified sound or music, to make sure we understand.
Right, that's what Dave said.
Inside the clubhouse.
All windows, and can we say doors, because I understood, which doors made a big difference. All windows and doors shall be shut.
At all times or after nine?
How about when there is amplified sound or music inside the clubhouse past P M?
After, after some P M, all the windows and doors.
Nine P M, just because we don't have outs, we're not allowed outdoor events after nine, so that's the time, we don't wanna have noise, we're concerned about noise.
Fine.
Right, that's fine, that's good. I think that's good what you wrote.
Now, what about, what about the outside? We had, we had said, I thought, no amp.
Well, no, the outside says, no outside organized events are permitted after nine P M at all, so you're not gonna have outside noise, that's the problem is for me.
Right, but I was suggesting, and I thought Dave at least was in agreement with me, we, we had discussed it, that there should be no amplified sound. We asked them if they have, they said, no, we don't have any events, they don't have them now. So we're not stopping something that they had, but we could say no amplification outside, because.
I don't wanna say that, I, we didn't really, I, I would prefer, it wasn't, it wasn't discussed with let other people, I mean, you know, I'm not sure why we would do that. And I don't know that it's. They might have things in an afternoon and with, with sound.
And I don't think that they should have amplified sound outside. They've gotten a lot of complaints about noise. They can have acoustic music, they can have events, they can shout and scream and have fun, but it's the amplification across. I'm sorry, if I could just finish.
Oh, sorry.
For no amplification, amplified sound outdoors.
I, I think that's, I, I don't know, but we don't prohibit that for anyone else. My next door neighbor has amplified music when they have events. Um, and I think that prohibiting amplified sound at all times from outdoors seems to me, wasn't really discussed. It was not the issue, um, and I would actually have a problem with doing that.
And we put some condition that any amplified sound outdoors, um, must be moderate or modified or, or.
Complaints here. That was the difference, Rob, and we had a lot of complaints here. Historically.
Well, we had complaints, but you know, if you said to me, I don't think we asked anyone, well, what time was the noise that you were concerned about? What is it? We didn't ask specifically. I don't know that they were in the middle of the afternoon that they were complaining about. I thought they were complaining mostly about nighttime.
I know that, I know that when we did, monitored on the rails, we, that, that there was no amplified sound outside on their team at any time, so we have had that. And also, I would like to note that this is not in the M one district, this is a slightly different situation than the, the country clubs that we were looking at. This is a, a community or corporation here in, in, right, right in the middle residential district, and it has gotten complaints. Um, so I would say no amplification out for organized events.
Yeah.
Board and Madam Chair, so that the same day that there was a discussion, not a discussion about this in person, uh, we talked about perhaps doing a site visit and, um, adding shrubbery to.
No, I, I think we already considered that and we're not gonna do.
Yeah.
Sorry, let's just keep moving.
I, I, my comment, I would have to share, I, I, I agree with Meg a bit, cause I ask myself this. What would they do that they need amplification outside in that neighborhood, in a residential area? And what do they need? They wanna have some people outside gathering and things, that's fine, but to start with, I don't know, did they, I don't think they ever said they needed it.
Yeah, they never said they had, so we're not preventing them from doing something that they are already in the habit of doing. Purbing it, we're just preventing it from happening.
And what if?
Organization that has not monitored itself well, that has gotten complaints, has not responded to those complaints well with, with, um, to the neighbors, and they are, they are right in the middle nestled in a residential district. So I, and I, we have, when we had this, we had a restaurant that had noise complaints and was facing a lot of residences. We did say, outside, you can't have any amplification. We did something similar.
Yeah, but, but, and I agree, we did that for modern on the rails, but then we had direct complaints about, I just don't recall anybody specifically. Excuse me, Meg, I don't recall anybody specifically saying, um, that it was a problem during the daytime, and if I'm wrong, and if I missed that, that's fine, I just didn't recall that.
But nobody said it was a problem for modern on the rails.
Yeah, they did. They talked about Sunday. Problem during the day. They specifically talked about problems during the day.
I, I don't remember that, so.
Well, let me ask you, what would be another callback? If you didn't say all the time, would it be after six? Would it be after seven? During the week? I don't know why you're getting involved with, with allowing outdoor amplifications. I, I don't, whatever.
All right, I'm, I'm okay. If you wanna change it, that's fine. I'm not gonna object to it. I, I just.
I think, I, I, I think that it should be in there that no amplification.
Okay.
Outside.
I, I could do standalone language like what's highlighted here.
Okay.
Yeah. Which, was that something that was picked up from a former resolution that?
Everything, all of these conditions were essentially, except the ones I'm editing, was from the last resolution.
Okay, so we actually had, it was buried in there, and it's a little unclear because it came after something about inside the clubhouse, but the fact that there's no outdoor live music or amplified sound was already in the past resolution.
No, it doesn't, no, it's not that there's not gonna be outdoor live music. There can be outdoor live music, they just can't be outdoor amplified.
Right.
Amplified sound or music.
Yeah.
Sure.
Period.
Okay. Okay, going on, so now we get to H. Unless, Meg, you have something else before that?
Um, no, look at my notes.
Okay, the applicant says, the applicant shall identify to the board a person employed by the club who is responsible for the enforcement of this resolution and the conditions. And such, such employee shall be present at all member sponsored events at the club. And maybe it should be at all events at the club. We can make it at all events. At all organized events. Because if you recall, the big concern was, they were saying, nobody was there who was responsible. If it's a member, right, it was all about member sponsored events, so that, when the board identifies a person, whoever that person is, that person has to be there at all member sponsored events.
Should it be a person or persons, just to give them some flexibility?
They're identifying a person who is responsible for the enforcement of the resolution. So whoever that person is, that's the person who has to be there.
Robin, I tried some other language. Can I just try it with you?
Oh, sure, yeah.
I just kinda did this while you guys were talking, it's much too long though. But it says, at all times when member sponsored events are taking place, an employee or authorized representative of the applicant, who is not a sponsor or participant in the event, shall be physically on the property and authorized to take action to ensure compliance with the conditions herein, and to receive and respond to any complaints from residents of other properties.
Um, I think some of that's fine, David, but since, since H already says they have to identify a person, I think let's not have them have, you know, you're gonna, you know, let's have one person that's always the person responsible. So take your language and add it to H instead of what I added. I think so, while I don't, I don't have exactly what you wrote, but if you say, shall identify the board, a person employed by the club who is responsible for the enforcement of this resolution and the conditions you in, and such person shall be present at all member sponsored events and all of the things you said about shall be empowered to take action, whatever else you said, we could add there.
The problem is though, that by picking one person, Robin, I don't think that's realistic, cause I think, what happens if that person's sick, or what happens if?
Then let's have H say, shall identify to the board, a person or persons, one or more person.
Or say to the building department, I mean, I guess, I don't know. I mean, I think it's more, I don't have a problem with that, but I think it's important that they are responsible.
Yeah, I know, no, I said we can add that. We should absolutely add that.
And it can't be a sponsor.
Correct. It says employee, not a, not a, um, not a member, so if it's an employee.
And it'd be an authorized rep or just an employee?
Um, I think if they're an employee and they're authorized, what you, the language you had, something about how they're authorized to take action and enforce should be.
Be physically on the, and authorized to take action.
Yeah.
To ensure.
Yeah, I think all of that's good.
Yeah, cause otherwise you just have, it's gonna be, I don't know who was there, compliance with the conditions here and, and to receive and respond to complaint.
Can you, can you read that parts more slowly so that Rob can get it?
Or email it to me?
Sure, can do that too.
Yeah, that, that'll be easiest. Not, I'm not very good at dictation.
I'm not gonna, all right. As we get this, come on. This is not my, I'm, I'm having one computer I'm using for one purpose and another for another, so that means I'm neither doing well with either one. All right, um, give me one second, I'll get it to you. Oh, I'm sorry, just give me one second, here we are.
You know, we said employed at the club, because that's what we said before, but, um, I suppose we don't, do we really care if it's an employee or a member, as long as it's not the member who's having the event?
What, what's your, what's your email?
It's R, Stout, R S T O U T. Right. At W O H dot com.
I, did you get it? Did you get it? Did you get it?
Not yet.
Why not? Mine doesn't go in the house, you gotta go outside. Didn't get it?
Oh, yeah. Oh, there it is.
There you go. I don't know. Not married to the language, but it's, I just wanted to, it's not someone there who can watch it, you know? Yeah, I was dancing because they played late, so I got the dance light, right?
No, no, your language is good, David. It's, you do need to say something like that.
Now, I think I say, and, and they gotta be, and so someone goes to complain.
How about instead of employed, a, a person or persons assigned by the club to be responsible?
Well, why, well, that, you can put an employer authorized person, or authorized. Just leave employer authorized representative, cause otherwise it's gonna be, well, I thought it was Joe, so it's an employer authorized representative.
Yeah, so shall identify to the board, a person or persons or employed by the. Yeah, so shall identify to the board, a person or persons or employed by the club or authori- or authorized representative.
Right. Robert, you'll play with that, right?
Mm-hmm.
But is it, I guess the one question, Rob, do you, we really want this, that they're going to give this to the board? Sort of puts us in the operational aspect of this thing. I mean, I guess.
We said this, this was in the last one, this was in the, this.
Alright, fine, fine, fine. So then, why don't you say, and leave it filed with the Board of Appeals? So that it's filed with us, right?
But. The point is, you want a contact person the day of the event to reach out to if something happens.
And I don't know, it could be the board. I think that should be the Department of Buildings.
Yeah, that's, I agree with that.
It's the building department, we're not going to look at it, we're not going to enforce it.
Yeah, Robin will say, what are they playing? What kind of music?
I want to know if I can dance to it.
There you go. I know where you're at, Robin, no problem.
That's the first line on H, shall identify to the, we're changing board to some.
Department of Buildings, let's make it Department of Buildings.
Well, why don't you do this, if I may suggest? Say, at all times, da-da-da-da-da, well, like what we, what we talked about, and then say, the person, the foregoing person shall be identified, shall, contact shall be provided to the building department. Because otherwise are you conditioning it upon the one or the other? This is.
No, no, you're, yeah, no, that's good, that's good.
You follow me, Robert, on that?
Yeah, no, that's good.
Yeah, no, I'm, Robert, you got?
I'm sorry, it's identify.
In other words, you're doing, start with identify, because then the fact that you want to identify, the, the issue is not to identify.
Take out to the board there.
Yeah, the issue is that at all times when member sponsored events are taking place, da-da-da-da-da, period. Then you say, the person, the aforesaid person shall, the name of the contact shall also be provided to the building department prior to the events.
So.
Because otherwise you have a situation where you don't know what the contingency, what's the antecedent. So in other words, there's a rule, the rule is, you've got to have someone there, period. The next aspect is, okay, you also have to file that name. But the, the thrust is not filing the name, the thrust is, this is the condition. Because otherwise we're going to have every condition we ever put into a resolution, the building departments could have a telephone book.
So, so, so the step, step one is that the applicant should have somebody at each event?
Bingo, right. And step two is, in the same sentence, the paragraph is, that the name of the aforesaid individual, she, the contact shall at all times be unfilled with the building department.
Uh, Madam Chair and Board, if I may.
Yes.
The person and contact, the contact info should go to the building department and the police department.
Okay.
Please.
So please put that in, Rob. Yeah, because if it's a weekend or something, it's going to be the police depart- or nighttime, it's going to be the police department that's enforcing it.
Thank you.
Dad, do you find, get bring up your suitcase? No, but I gotta get a suitcase here. Robin, are we off? I'm sorry. Hello?
We're still, we're still, Rob is still typing it in.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I just want to know what my suitcase was. I'm packing to get out of here, that's.
What's the time?
Yeah, I don't need to sleep anymore.
Hey, it's only nine thirty, David.
Does that make sense so far? When I typed at the beginning?
Um, during each event, is it each event or is it a member sponsored event?
Well, we were concerned for members.
During each event.
It shouldn't be during each event.
Okay, fine, at each event, the applicant must have or shall have.
Shall have is fine, shall have an employee.
And that, I would take out the identity of that. I would leave that, I would break that separate because you're merging all these different thoughts. So I would go after the word representative presence on the property, um, physical, physically on the property and authorized to take action to ensure. See, that's where I would go. See, I would, it's on the bottom there, isn't it?
Yeah, or acting is not right.
See, and authorized. I said.
Well, why?
Yeah, see, you want to get involved with who's authorized to take action, or do we just want to know who the police should?
No, I think.
No, 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 no. Two different things, Rob, two different things, at least from my standpoint.
Yeah.
Thing one is, this is the condition. Has nothing to do with the police, has nothing to do with the building department. If they tell nobody, I don't care. If they violate it, that's the problem. Second is, so that we, because of the history, we say, okay, I'm not a for said person, they have their name, contact information has to be with such and such. So that's why I would keep them as separate thoughts, they're not contingent, they don't float with, you know. The primary one is, you can't do it. The second is how we enforce it.
No, the primary one is you have to do this.
Right, right, exactly. You have to have someone there. You're right, I'm sorry. So I would say at all times when members of potential events taking place, an employee, the applicant, who is not a sponsor or participant in the event shall be physically on the property and authorized to take action to ensure compliance with the conditions herein and to receive and respond to any complaints from residents or other properties.
Yeah, and, hold on one second.
Period.
It has to say authorized to take action, because you don't want somebody who's there, oh yeah, I'm here, but nobody, I'm just here.
Yeah, that's what I.
They hired me and told me to come, but nobody told me I was supposed to do anything. They have to be somebody who knows they're responsible.
That's what I emailed you, right? I had that in there, I think.
That's, yes, I'm.
That's alright, that's alright.
Alright, so this is a blend of our language, David. During each event, the applicant shall have an employee or authorized representative who is not a sponsor of such event.
Well, what about, oh, timeout. You want to put participant? That's what I, what about that? Robin?
I'm sorry?
You want to put down after the word, not as, I had.
But if it's, if it's, if it's a club sponsored one, i- if it's a club, it's like an all, everybody in the club, the.
If it's a club sponsored one, he's the, the person is going to be a member of the club.
Alright, fine, 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 that's fine. Alright, it's not a sponsor of such event. Comma. You need a comma there, don't you? Physically on the property and authorized to take action to ensure compliance with the conditions herein and to receive and respond to any complaints from residents of other properties, period. Yeah, that's good. I like that. Write it to the word, that's the period. And then you put down a sentence that says the contact info, the name, the contact information uh, right? Of the aforesaid employee or authorized representative shall be provided and filed with the building department.
I don't think filed, just shall be provided to.
The building, the, and shall be provided in writing. Because otherwise, I called them and I asked my machine, been there. So I'll be ship of item writing to the building department and police department, well, at least how many days before?
I don't think it has to be any days before.
Fine, fine, period, period.
I just think it's prior to.
A prior to the event.
Yeah. I mean, you could do it a minute before, as long as it's.
I guess, I, I think that's, you're right, you're right. Yeah, we all slip into overreaching. You're right, no, that's right.
I'm going, I'm going to end it there.
Yeah.
Boy, that's, that's, is that politically correct to merge building and police as departments? It's accurate. Okay, I'm good with that, yeah. And a copy of this shall be provided to every member of the club.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah?
Okay.
What do you want?
Anything else, um.
Alright.
Um, Meg, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Meg?
I checked my notes and.
Oh, I got it.
I had. My notes.
So we're good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, does somebody want to make a, a motion to adopt this?
Yeah, we have to take Greta off the, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, no, she was just saying we're accused, you would just put recused down there for Greta. Um.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll set, yeah.
Revision, new jobs.
Meg?
Check.
Meg? We're voting.
Yes.
Meg, did you say yes? Sorry.
I, I did say yes.
I'm sorry, okay, and I vote yes as well, so this motion, this resolution as amended is adopted. Okay.
I'll clean up the formatting and get it around for signatures.
Okay.
That's fine. Does that do?
The next item on the agenda is fifteen eight twenty eighteen four sixteen Waverly, which isn't a closed application, although it's listed as a closed application, but is a discussion of the F E I S. So Ashley, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, and the applicant is, the applicant is going to present, right? Did I get that right?
Yes, so I'm going to promote the applicant, they're going.
I'm going to be right back, he can start and I'll just have to listen, but I have to, I'm, I'm just going to step aside from, out for a minute. Okay.
Um.
But, but.
Why don't you ask counsel a question first?
Yeah. Did you have a question, David?
I have a question to counsel, it's, understand the process, because I didn't even get mine, I, there was a problem, I didn't get the F E I S, so. That's, I do want to review. Uh, this is an initial presentation regarding the draft, is that my understanding?
No, this is about the F E I S, not the draft, the draft.
No, but the draft of the, but it's, I think it's referred to as the draft.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, right.
Right.
We are, it's ours to adopt at some point, but my, my inquiry is, do we have an opportunity after tonight, we hear them, to have them come back and then we react to it?
Uh, yes, because you, you have substantial comments from your.
Right, yeah, I understand. But we don't.
We have, we, it was only submitted like two weeks ago, right? Ashley, when was it submitted?
Yeah, so it was submitted just in time for the deadline for this meeting. Um, there are hard copies available.
So no, I don't think the board members have had a chance to look at it yet, so um, the applicant is going to present. Ashley has her comments, or Ashley and A K R F have their comments. And um, we'll get to review the F E I S and we'll set a date for a whatever the next step would be.
And we have, do we do better, and I'm just posing this hypothetically, but is it better, Robin, if, instead of the applicant speaking first, that we all take a chance to review everything and then have the applicant come in, at which point we kind of do the whole package?
Ashley says that it's customary, Ashley, you explain.
Maybe, maybe I could give a, a brief introduction of what we're doing tonight, so um, the applicant has, uh, you know, we have the D E I S, you had a public hearing on the D E I S, a number of comments were submitted from both the public as well as the board members. The applicant has gone back and prepared a preliminary final environmental impact statement. As part of that project, they have made some pretty substantial revisions to the plan, which is what they would like to present uh, this evening to the board. Uh, and they have drafted responses to all of the comments that were submitted on the draft environmental impact statement. So the preliminary final environmental impact statement is currently on the Village's website. And it's also, hard copies are also available for each of the board members at Village Hall. So if you haven't had a chance to pick it up yet, it, it is there and, and ready. Um, A K R F has prepared a memorandum on that initial draft, which outlines some comments, which we expect the applicant will um, update. And then, once you've had a chance to review the document, uh, hopefully at the next meeting, the board members could provide their comments on the document so that the applicant can make those additional changes. Because ultimately, the F E I S is the lead agency's document and the voice of the F E I S and the way that comments are responded to are, need to be in a manner that the, the majority of the board agrees with.
Right, the word has to adopt it as F E I S, correct? The board has to adopt it as it.
Yes, yes, ultimately, the board has to adopt.
I, I guess my point is, it, with, um, the comments here, which I looked at, which are interesting, are dated yesterday, so you know.
Yes, yes, well, we only got the document, you know, two weeks ago.
I'm just, all I was questioning if this is the right time, or they.
Actually, you had said this was the customary process that the applicant would present, so that's why I.
Yes, this is the customary process, that this is a good opportunity for the applicant to be able to walk through the changes that they've made in response to the comments from this board, so that it gives you some context as you're reading the, the document. Um, so you could, you know, see what their, their thought process was.
Gotcha, alright, rock and roll.
Yeah, um, so I, I, at least I'll be right back, so you can.
Okay.
You're on mute.
Co, I, I, you can start, I have to step away for a minute, you can start, I will listen in um, to anything I missed, but go ahead.
So is that my cue?
Yes.
It is your cue.
Good evening. Very much. For, for the record, my name is Tony Joffrey, I'm a member of the law firm McCutty and Fader, four forty-five Hamilton Avenue in White Plains, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I'm joined this evening, you see Murphy on the screen, as well as by Michael Hudson. Uh, Ashley, can you also elevate Kim Martelli to a panelist? And Kim is going to share her screen in a moment, if that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm just going to give a brief overview. Um, thank you for the opportunity, uh, we haven't uh, been before the, the board in a while. We've been uh, doing a lot of work since the last time we've appeared before you, and I think that'll be reflected in the presentation that you see this evening. It's not going to be a long presentation, but we certainly wanted to identify for the board that we took to heart the comments that were received during the D I S public hearing process. The board had a number of comments and concerns, as well as members of the public. And the applicant has returned with the, with a preliminary F E I S, which I think reflects on the comments that we did here. Um, the, the project has been re-envisioned and the project has changed significantly from what you've seen previously in the D I S. Uh, Kim is going to walk you through that in a moment, but I just wanted to give you some highlights and, and thank the board for the comments and the concerns, and, and I think you'll, you'll respond favorably um, to the changes that have been made, which we believe are more closely aligned with the Village's goals, as well as with the, uh, the, the proposed maker zone. Um, the, the prior proposal did propose to remove some of the buildings on the property, but leave uh, one of the buildings at the corner. Um, all of the buildings, except for the existing self-storage, are proposed to be raised, which we believe is an improvement. Uh, as part of the changes, and you'll see that the proposed addition right now is separated into five separate distinct segments. Uh, the property, um, and the building that is on the property reflects, uh, we believe a, an appropriate transition, and the treatment significantly reduces the mass, which was one of the significant concerns that were raised by the majority of the board members. Uh, you'll see in the proposal.
Jeffrey, could I ask you, you said there are five segments now?
You, that'll, Mr. New, but when, when Kim walks you through, you'll, you'll.
Oh, I see, I got you. Fine, good, good.
Thank you.
And, and I'm sorry also to interrupt, at some point you will put visuals up, is that?
Yes, I'm just kidding, I'm, I'm just setting the context for you, and, and Kim is going to be, so.
I can turn them on whenever you want.
Yeah, I'm the boring guy that gives you the overview, Kim gets to show you all the really nice pretty pictures and take all, all the credit, which is her credit, you know, she did a wonderful job, and you'll see. Um, the board also commented with respect to the height, and as I mentioned, the height will step down, so it'll transition to three stories to two stories, and importantly, the building that we proposed in the D I S to remain at the corner is proposed to be eliminated and, and be replaced by a small pocket park with benches and, and landscaping that really will help the transition uh, of this, this, this corner. Um, when Ms. Martelli's done, uh, knowing that there were some significant impacts as a result of the last storm in the village, uh, I'm going to ask Mr. Stein just to walk you briefly through some of the stormwater proposal improvements. And I want to leave you with that the proposed uses are also changing uh, with respect to this proposal. The Murphy Brothers Contracting Business, which was going to remain as, in the building on the corner, is going to be relocated into the new building. A new woodworking shop reflective of the, uh, the new maker or the proposed maker zone is also going to be incorporated into the proposal, as well as a third use, which is a, an incubator, professional office space, so. Uh, with that context, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Martelli to walk you through the, the revisions.
Before you, before you said that, you, you were talking very quickly, so I need help on the last three things. One is they're going to move, Murphy Brothers is going to move into the building itself.
Yes.
For the building. And the, the second one, I didn't get, what was the second one?
A proposed woodworking shop.
That will be in the, in the building, right?
That's correct.
And then you, you said an incubator, you got to help me with that, what is that?
Prof- professional office space.
Okay. Like where you rent an office, or shared offices, et cetera?
Right.
Got you. And are the amounts and everything in, in the document itself, that?
Yes, and you can see that on page uh, one four of the, of the document.
Okay, thank you, that's right.
And again, in, uh, as, as Ms. Liar indicated to the board, uh, hard copies have been at Village Hall for you to pick up, as well as there is a link on the website that you can go directly to the document as well, but Ms. Martelli?
Um, uh, good evening, Chair members of the board, I'm Kim Martelli, owner and principal of K T M Architects. We are located also here in the village of Mamaroneck, just down the street from Village Hall and Fenimore Road. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm going. Um, so I'm, I'm going to limit the visuals to the ones that are pertinent to the conversation, uh, that Mr. Joffrey just kind of summarized. But I think the most helpful to you is I'm going to start with, um, an illustration of the current site plan, and I'll highlight what we were just mentioning, which is, um, the pantone, the gray building in the far right corner. That's the existing self-storage facility. And the building which was originally intended to be maintained, we often call it the corner building, at the corner of Waverly and Fenimore, you'll see in our new proposed design, it's intended to be removed. We had initially always intended to remove what's called, uh, the barn building, some of the smaller structures along the back or south side of the lot, and the central two-story Murphy Brothers Contracting Offices. Okay, we can always move back to this. And just historically, as a reference, we've kept in for illustration, a reminder of that indication of the larger building with the corner building remaining, and we're going to depart from that, show you our new designs. So, the full package you have is a complete site plan. This is just a helpful illustration. I'm going to enlarge it as much as I can on the screen. And the colorings are helpful to indicate light gray being the existing self-storage facility, approximately forty thousand square feet. And the other colors represent the tiers of the new, um, addition. So the, the darkest one is an only two-story section. If you'll notice, we pulled the proposed building twenty-seven feet off of Fenimore, as opposed to the prior setback, which was about seven point eight, I believe. Um, as you step back in your next tier, we have a three-story structure, which wraps around the highest portion, which is a four-story structure consistent with the existing self-storage facility. Um, and as mentioned, where the corner building once was located, there is a very charming pocket park, and we've done a rendering to give you a sense of the scale of that park. It has access off of both Waverly and Fenimore with a lovely little circular walkway and some charming benches for usage.
Can I just ask you, the building itself, in terms of the envelope, the external envelope, that's the same size, you're just reducing the height, or were you also reducing the front, the, the depth and other provisions?
The, the footprint is smaller. Uh, the original footprint brought us to a coverage of fifty-nine percent. The current application brings us to a footprint of fifty-two percent of the total lot area. I'm doing quick math in my head, I believe it's one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet less, prior application. And I think probably the most helpful, um, is the inclusion of some valuable renderings. So in, in one view, you can see a variety of vantage points of the amendment, and what we were describing as the five independent areas is we've used this in historical and successful designs to create some differentiation between the scale and massing of the buildings. So this bottom right corner is a good reference to five, meaning far left is the lowest two-story structure. The second is a three-story structure. And the third, fourth, and fifth, as they tie into the existing self-storage building, are all four stories with varying elements and varying depths. It helps us create some depth and some character in the architecture of the building.
Is that, that the five segments that they refer to?
That's correct, Mr. Newf. And that top view gives you a bit of an overall overview, a little bit of an aerial of that pocket park, which will have both round plantings and additional trees proposed. And you can see an overview of our parking design, similar to the current access off of Waverly, two-way parking within the site, and then one-way e-brass onto Fenimore, heading into the village. And I, I pulled together some highlights on what the zoning variance reductions are. But I think the ones we'd like to focus on are, as a reminder, our initial coverage intention was to go from the current forty-five percent coverage to fifty-nine. We'd now like to propose fifty-two, that is two percent over the current, um, over the permitted. I'm, I'll correct that, sorry, it's my mistake right there. Um, and the maximum, uh, uh, FAR, uh, we originally were proposing a two-point-four-three FAR, a hundred and seven thousand square feet and change. We have now reduced that to a one-point-nine-two, eighty-four thousand, hundred and twelve. Large numbers I'm describing represents approximately twenty-three thousand, twenty-two thousand square foot difference. Um, and with respect to overall impervious area, we've been able to propose an overall impervious area reduction of about two point, like I said, two-point-eight, I think I got that right, two-point-eight percent, about one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet in overall impervious area reduction. And the, some of the prior variances remain. We're still seeking the fourth story, uh, within a three-story limit. But we're not looking to exceed height limitations. Um, and as I mentioned, a prior seven-point-eight-foot setback will now be twenty-seven-plus feet setback.
I thought that there was a reference earlier, uh, this evening, where you said the height will step down from three to two stories.
Yep, so I just zoomed back to that. So you'll see the two-story begins at Fenimore, three-story adjacent, four-story as it approaches existing. So this white, this white structure begins at two.
Alright, alright, so that it, I took that to mean the whole thing. So the heights, it, it goes from, it goes, it starts at two and goes to four.
That's correct. The, the area closest to Fenimore will be a two-story structure. And the, um, the, the supplemental occupancies, the woodworking shop, Murphy Brothers Offices, and the co-working space, which is a business very familiar to our firm, we've had great success with one in Larchmont now, and we're looking at another one in Scarsdale. Those facilities are located in both the two-story and the three-story structure. If, if it helps, I can go into the floor plans to remind everyone where the different occupancies are.
Well, if you could just, I would appreciate it, if you could just very quickly, the two-story will be occupied by what?
Sure, sure. So the two-story, I'm, I'm.
I don't want, I don't care about the detail, I'll look at that, but I just want to.
Okay, no problem. So the two-story, the ground floor of the two-story is the woodworking space. The second floor of the two-story, second floor of that two-story is Murphy Brothers. The third is out, the third floor of the three-story structure.
Okay, so that's the first, let's do it building by building, okay? So the, the next one is a three-story one, right?
The three-story only has one, other than self-storage, one occupancy at the top level, the third level, and that's the co-working space.
Know which one?
Co-working, co-working where multiple entrepreneurs can join in and work together. Share a printer, share, share a, share a kitchenette.
Uh, okay.
And then self-storage is on the bottom floors of, of that?
Self-storage is on every floor in limited amounts. So it's a little bit smaller on the first floor, because we, we also have the full woodworking space. Second floor, it occupies everything but the last bit of it, and I'm scrolling through as I mention them. Third floor, it's pulled back, because obviously it's a shorter, smaller footprint. And fourth floor, it occupies one hundred percent of that area.
So self-storage is, so self-storage is in the two-story and the three-story as well?
Self-storage is on every floor of the addition.
Is in every floor, as well as every segment?
Not every segment.
Well, that's, okay, you've got a two-story segment, and let me add, because I, I'm a loss, so. You've got a two-story segment, remember that? You have the ground.
It has no self-storage.
It has no self-storage. Okay, just to say. So when you say it all has, it's no self-storage, okay?
I, I think that was clear. Every floor has self-storage on it.
Okay, well, we're going building.
By telling him which building.
They're not separate buildings, and that's very important to understand about.
The third, the three-story building, you have, um, office space is on the first floor? What, what's on that? I'm lost there.
Woodworking is on the first floor.
On the, woodworking is on, on, on the, that's on the two-story, right?
It's on both the two and the three, because I want to clarify, I want to make sure the board understands, if you look at the floor plans, these are not separate buildings. These are just differing depths, the facade and differing architecture.
So woodworking is on the first floor?
Correct.
Okay, what else?
Murphy Brothers is on the second floor.
I got you, okay.
Co-working's on the third floor.
Of both the two-story portion and the three-story portion?
The two-story portion has Murphy Brothers.
And the three-story portion is Murphy Brothers on the second floor as well?
Yeah.
Three, no, no.
No, so Murphy Brothers is only on the second floor of the two-story portion, but. But the woodworking shop is on the first floor of the two and three-story portions.
Correct, it's a larger square footage.
Got it.
Because it's woodworking, you need space to do really good crafty woodworking.
But isn't Murphy Brothers also in the three-story on the, located on a second floor?
They're on the second story of the two-story portion.
And what about on the three-story portion?
The co-working is on, it's only on the third floor of the three-story portion.
Who was?
Self-storage, Dave, self, Murphy Brothers is only in the two-story portion, not at all in the three-story portion.
Not at all in the three-story, okay.
Yep, so I'm on that third floor now, and this is the co-working space. I'm on the third floor, right where I can look out at Fenimore Road. And I could, I could do it in model, too.
No, what, what, what floor is the, is the co-space, the office spaces on?
Third floor.
Okay. The second, and who's on the second there?
Who's on first? Murphy Brothers, sorry, I had to say, I had to do it. Murphy Brothers is on second, and self-storage behind them, right? So I'll, I'll highlight Murphy Brothers now. Also facing Fenimore, they're the nearest, nearest position to Fenimore Road.
Yeah.
They got the best views of the traffic.
Alright.
We go back to the zoning table for a moment, unless we have.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. And then know that I am working those zoning tables furiously. I'm constantly trying to tweak those numbers to coincide in the right formulas. So we noted, we noted some discrepancies, we'll double-check, because it's a lot of formulas.
Right, and I saw that in some of their comments. I always look at some briefly, I did.
Yeah, I, I couldn't possibly have any more Excel spreadsheets than I have now.
Um, what I don't see is parking in the zoning compliance schedule.
Right at the bottom, is that helpful? Yep, parking is right at the bottom. Here you go. It's on all the zoning.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I see off-street parking.
Off-street parking is parking not beyond your property.
So you didn't change the parking requirements, even though you changed some of the uses? I, 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 having gone at length, I haven't looked at this, I saw, but I saw a little bit of discussion that seemed to be very similar to before this design had changed, and arguing why the twenty-five or twenty-six spaces was, um, sufficient, even though the, it called for the one thirty-seven. I just didn't see any discussion about what is required for the new uses that you have.
Tony, I'll let you field that.
We'll, 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 again, there's office space that's, that's consisted, but we will provide a discussion, uh, as a response to the comments. And again, we only received the AKRF comments late, late last night, as well as the Keller Sessions comments. Obviously, we, we could not respond within a day to those, and I'm certainly, you know, you obviously haven't had the opportunity to review the PFEIS, and certainly not any comments, so we will be providing those additional comments to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I, what I will be looking at, I, obviously, this is a overview that you're giving us right now, thank you very much, and I know that we'll be reviewing all the comments and things. Um, but you are going to speak, uh, to something about the flood mitigation, or what you were thinking about in this new design, are we getting to that portion? Do you want to give an overview of that?
Michael, Michael Stein is, is available, and he's on the call, so Mr. Stein, I'll turn it over to you, please.
Yes, good evening. Uh, if you just, um, share a screen, Kim?
Well, I will drop it, and you're all you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the, the first screen I'm putting up, uh, good evening, Michael Stein, uh, President of Hudson Engineering. Um, so the first screen I'm putting up is for, uh, volumetric analysis of the, the, of the existing and proposed, uh, flood volume within the, within the hundred-year flood plane. Um, the, the different colors represent different elevations within the property. Uh, so what we've done is we've analyzed going up incrementally the storage at each of those, between each of those elevations, and then we have a cumulative storage volume, uh, that we have in existing conditions, as well as we have in the proposed conditions. Uh, overall, in the proposed conditions, we have a slight increase in flood storage volume. Um, so we're, we're meeting with the requirements who are, um, Mr. Mr. Keller from Keller Sessions had requested that we eliminate the, the buildings from within the footprint of that analysis, uh, which we have gone through, and from this, the letter that came through today, uh, from Keller Sessions' office, uh, they were satisfied with, with the changes we had made to this. And to switch over to our stormwater management plan. So basically, again, one, one of the, the, a couple key factors in looking at the, the site was first the volumetric analysis to make sure we weren't usurping any flood storage volume, to make sure we provided a comparable volume to what was existing on the site beforehand. Uh, second, there's actually overall, and I think Ms. Martelli mentioned it earlier, is that there's an overall decrease in impervious area of the site, so we went down, I think about twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet. And, um, based upon the reduction of impervious area, is, this would, site would qualify as redevelopment as far as New York State DEC regulations, where we, the main requirement for water, stormwater mitigation is going to be, uh, water quality remediation. Um, so we provided multiple, uh, water quality components in the stormwater design. First, the existing building, even though it's not part of the new, the, the existing building, uh, the runoff from coming from the roof is going into a rain garden right along, uh, Waverly Avenue. The runoff from the parking lot is collected, um, between trench drains, drain inlets, and that passes through a mechanical separator, and that ties into the catch basin, uh, within the street, as, and the runoff coming from all the roof leader drains of the building, they're tributary to, uh, a tiered-level rain garden on the side of the property, where the water's filtered through a filter media, and ultimately, once the filter, goes through the filter media, is released to the catch basin within the street.
Can you, can you explain what happened, um, during the, the storm of earlier this, uh, last month?
Ida.
Ida. Can you tell, how was the site in its current condition affected by Ida?
The site was flooded.
Okay, and if that happened, if we had the same rain flood condition in, which will not be a hundred years, whatever, however many years it will be before we have that, what will this, what will your, how will your plan change what happened in Ida, or does it not? Will the same thing happen? My question may not be right, correct, but you understand what I'm saying?
No, no, I, I do, and a, as I initially mentioned with the volumetric analysis, we have a, a minor de, a minor increase in flood storage volume on the site. It, it will be imperceptible, it won't make, it, it really, with that small increase, there would be no difference in level in the flood elevations. Theoretically, a, a billionth of a foot lower, but again, it would be imperceptible.
When you said earlier about the site was flooded, can you just explain what you mean by that? Was it closed? Was it, was it damaged? Were any of the customers' contents damaged? Was it closed for business, the portions of it emptied? I mean, do you?
I, I would defer to, um, I, I, I think Mike Murphy's on the line.
Well, wouldn't you have to know that to make your assessment, is my question?
No, because we're keeping, by going through the volumetric analysis, we're going through, um, what volumes of flood storage are currently, are currently on-site or proposed to be on-site. So whether or not, um, they, they have flooding and have damage, the, the volumetric analysis would make the same.
Well, if it's.
And the site, and the site.
Wouldn't it?
And the site also does not have the stormwater improvements that Mr. Stein walked you through, and the FAIS and DIS demonstrate.
Right, it also doesn't have half of the improvements on it. Okay, I'm with it. I'll say it, well, I'll review it. Okay. So does somebody know the extent, or you'll address that?
Um, we, we, we could, we can certainly address it later. We can, we can collect that information and provide it to you in the, uh, We, we, we could, we can certainly address it later, we can, we can collect that information and provide it to you in the, in the revised FEIS.
Because I thought parts, I thought the building was closed and parts of the contents was destroyed, et cetera.
We, we can, we can, we can get that information and provide.
Are you aware of it now, or is this just, I mean, I don't want to play with this thing, but, you know, I don't want you to waste your time, and I don't want to waste mine, but I appreciate you can get it, but you're the applicant, and this is our FEIS, so my question is a simple. So my question is a simple, and does anybody know what occurred there or not? Because right now I'm hearing not.
That's, that's certainly not the case, and certainly, and Mr. Newfeld, as you know, th- this process and the FAIS is that we're, we're to take comments and provide the comments in, in the FAIS document, which will become your document, so we'll provide the, the responses in an appropriate way, in a way that is, addresses the, the comments. Um, not only from AKRF, Keller Sessions, but from the board members, and certainly to the extent that the board has a public hearing, we'll have to address that as well.
So right now, you're not prepared to explain the nature of the damage took place? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll provide it.
Oh, no, I'm asking you, I'm asking you a question, try me on this one. I'm, I'm sorry, and I don't want to belabor this point, and neither do you, but right now, someone able to tell us in, in one paragraph what the extent of the damage and that took place and the impact of the flooding in Idaho was?
I, I don't have that information for you this evening, but we can certainly get that information for you.
Okay.
Um, okay, why don't you proceed with your, where you were, or what was next on your?
That, that summarizes where we wanted to provide the overview and, and the, the market changes that were made since DIS. Um, we believe that it's a market improvement over what was previously presented as part of the DS, and then the prior iteration of the project. It's obviously in response to the comments, uh, from the board, we believe we've been very responsive to the comments and concerns.
Right there.
Uh, we just received the AKRF memorandum, uh, which we are just going through right now, and in order to be able to address, and we, we understand that your, your next board meeting, the old, the board would have had the opportunity to review the FEIS, which you apparently haven't done, uh, have, have the opportunity to do so to date. So we look forward to your comments next month. In the interim, we will be working on responding to, uh, the comments that were received, uh, this evening, as well as in the AKRF memorandum. And as Mr. Stein indicated, the Keller Sessions memorandum indicates that we've addressed all of their outstanding comments.
Okay. Robin, I'm just gonna ask this, I mean, uh, we, uh, we have a big agenda next month, I mean, I think we're gonna have some time for this or a separate day.
I, I don't know yet, I don't think applications aren't due yet, Ashley, do you have any idea what's come in for next month?
I don't, I haven't been forwarded anything from Woodtree.
Yeah, so we don't know.
So maybe hold it down to two or three, and otherwise, you know, if we're gonna bite the bullet on this, then just get into it and read it and study it. I mean, I want to be fair to them, and, you know, fair to all of us, so.
I, I think if it turns out that we have a lot of applications, which we don't have yet, um, we may have to consider having a work session to discuss this. Like we did when we originally discussed the FEIS, but let's wait and see, because if we don't really have many new applications, then I think it's not a problem to do it at the next meeting. So I think we need to wait and see.
Or you can consider just limiting the number that you put on, thanks.
Well, let's wait and see what we get, and then I would rather have a work session, because I don't want to delay people who need a special permit or, um, a variance in order to do something. I, I would rather have a work session to deal with this, if it turns out that we have a lot of applications.
Right.
Okay.
Dennis, do you have any idea, you know, whether you've been, we're sending people here?
That's, that's what I'm here for, so, uh, as of right now, there's currently two that I'm aware of.
When's the cutoff date?
Not for a while yet.
Yeah, next, uh, I believe it's the middle of next week, but I don't, don't hold it to, Ashley would know better.
I, I think you're right, but, yeah, it's like three weeks before the meeting.
But I think if we only have two applications, I think we can probably hear this at the meeting. We don't have a lot of applications left from, you know, closed applications to discuss, so I think we're probably okay. But I will, after we get that, we find out how many we have, I can send out, and, you know, um, we can send out an email, and if board members want to have a special work session, we'll have a work session. If at that point you're concerned about time, we'll just add a work session.
Yeah, we would just want to coordinate with, with you, because we have to put a notice sign on the property, so there is going to be a, a special meeting work session. We just want to make sure that we coordinate the appropriate.
Yeah, we, we would let you know.
Of course. And we want to make sure that we're there as well.
One question, Robin, is this, is this more conducive for in-person meeting?
Well, I, we just discussed that the next meeting was going to be a Zoom meeting. Now, is there some, are you saying that you want to have this done at an in-person meeting, or are you okay with a Zoom meeting, whether it's the next meeting or, so I don't know what you're asking?
Well, I think next meeting, it won't be a final, well, it's fine, that's, that's a.
I, I actually find when, when we're looking at plans and discussions, it's actually simpler on Zoom sometimes, because.
Yeah, I was thinking I would add.
Up on the wall, this is actually easier when you're, when you're highlighting something.
Especially if we're going to be doing any wordsmithing of text, it's a little easier to be able to pull it up on the screen, so everyone can follow along.
Got you.
And if nothing has changed, um, uh, Jerry, the village manager, sent out a memo, um, about a week ago, I believe, week and, week and a half ago, that all meetings were made on Zoom until January. Unless something or anybody's done anything in the last couple of days, I believe that holds true to doing all meetings till January. We have FEMA occupying the courtroom to a degree, and, um, so I'll, I'll double-check with, with the, uh, with the uppers and Jerry tomorrow uh, to see where the village stands, and I'll, I'll open that to Ashley.
Yeah, please do that, because we already had a discussion about that tonight, and while we said the next meeting was going to be on Zoom, we left the December meeting open. So if in fact we can't have a meeting in person yet, we would like to know that.
That was the last I heard as well, but I wasn't sure if you'd heard something different since then.
Okay. All righty.
All right, I'll, I'll keep you posted.
Um, okay, so Ashley, they've, they've said what they have to say, are you now going to explain your comments, or do we just read what, or what's next?
Um, I think, so basically, I, the brief overview of my comments are, you know, we noticed some inconsistencies that need to be corrected with some of the numbers. Um, we offered some wordsmithing suggestions to put it a little bit more in, into the village's voice. But I, I think that at this point, the applicant can take those comments and go back and, and provide a redline copy of the document for the next submission, so we can see how they made those changes. And that'll also give the board some opportunity to review the comments and see what additional comments that they have. And during this next month, if you have any comments or questions, you can email me individually, and I can start a running list that we can provide the applicant as well.
Similar to what we did with the original DEIS.
Okay, that, is that the memo we have here of October six? Yes.
Yes, yes, so that's the memo I, I sent out last night, and, and again, I apologize, it's, it was late, but, uh, I really had two weeks to read the large document, and I wasn't
Nothing.
Expecting anyone to take any action on it tonight, so.
Okay, all right, and I can pick up a copy of the next week at, at the village, right?
Yes, any, uh, the, the document is there.
Yeah, I once went to get one a while ago, it was more in a COVID, and I'll tell you, it was three trips and begging, and it was like a handoff, anyway, but good, okay, super. Thank you, Ashley.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay, so is there anything else, Ashley, we need to do about this?
No, I think, I think we're all set for this evening.
Okay, so, um, I think the, I think we covered the agenda, the only other thing then is I believe council wanted us to take a certain action with respect to one thirty, I think we're done with, with this application for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present, we look forward to seeing you next month, thank you.
Thank you. I think council wanted us to do something with respect to, um,
Sure.
The one thirty beach application?
Yeah, and, and it's not, not as if council wanted to do something, but the question was presented to us, uh, whether or not the, uh, certain changes could be made to the resolution that was adopted relative to the one thirty Beach Avenue property in, in September. Certain changes were proposed to the whereas clauses, and we found those, uh, changes to be, um, non-substantive and, uh, you know, unrelated to the actual operative clauses of the resolution. They were more in the spirit of clarifying the background whereas clauses to reflect the discussion that occurred at the meeting. Um, so it's fine to consider those changes, and if the board would like, they can vote to confirm whether or not they think those changes should be made, given that they are consistent with the discussion at the last meeting, if that's the board's intention. Um, Meg, if you'd like to discuss the substance of some of those, uh, changes, I can turn it over to you, I can also put up a redline on my screen if you would like.
I don't think it's necessary, um, um, I, I find the redlining is sometimes is what, where we get, um, distracting, or we don't read it the same way, it's actually can be confusing, but thank you very much for the offer. Um, yeah, the reason for the changes is to improve the clarity and accuracy of the factual record of the resolution. Has nothing to do with the findings or the reasoning behind the findings of the resolution, it has nothing to do with the outcome of the resolution. Um, the first whereas clause that has changes, um, is the one that describes the zoning attributes of the lot and the buildings of the lot at the time of the violation. So the goal of that one is simply to clarify what were the zoning attributes. Um, but our chair, Robin, had sent in some, um, suggested changes, but they came in very late, just that night before the meeting. So most of us, um, at least I was not able to review them, we were seeing them for the first time during the meeting. Um, we were looking at something that was track changes, which again, I find difficult to read, and I know there was some oral instruction. So, um, it was difficult to understand what the final paragraph would be. Uh, when I saw the printed resolution of the paragraph, um, I have to say, it just doesn't make any sense to me. So I don't mean, I think that we were all aligned, that the purpose was to simply clarify what were the zoning attributes at the time of the violations for the lot and for the buildings. But when I read, whereas the property on which the premises is located is within the R five zoning district, which permits one-family dwellings, but the premises is located on a lot, which has a legal non-conforming um, um, three-family use, consisting of two residential structures, one of which is a two-family, and the others are one-family structure located in two structures, consisting of two residential structures, of which the premises are a two-family residential structure, having three stories, the building, and a third unit located in a separate structure. So I think something got lost in there between the track changes and the oral instructions, so it definitely needed to be tightened up, because it seemed, um, kind of just to be circular, I, I wasn't quite sure what was meant by that paragraph. So, um, I submitted this paragraph, whereas the lot on which the premises is located is within the R five zoning district, which is zoned as a one-family residence district, but the premises is located on three floors in a legal pre-existing non-conforming two-family residence, the building, on a lot that also includes a legal one-family residence. I think that's easier to read, it's clearer, I'm not quite sure where, uh, the last, the last paragraph definitely needed some sort of editing, because it was sort of repetitive. Um, so simply, uh, an attempt to clarify, um, um, the zoning, the zoning attributes. It wasn't to add any new information or change any information that we were all, uh, working with. Um, I also inserted exactly village zoning code terms, so that's why it says, for instance, is zoned as a one-family residence district, that's what it says in the code. Um, the second whereas clause, uh, is one, um, to list the twenty-twenty resolutions finding on the notice of violation nineteen sixty-eight. It came up in a listing of just the actions that had been taken on each of the notices of violations. Um, again, um, our chair offered a change, uh, to this clause, and, um, has suggest, made the suggestion or the recommendation that we include in, uh, the finding that was actually in the twenty-twenty resolution. And so we were looking at that quote, um, I didn't object that you would, I thought the recommendation was that we would put the finding from twenty-twenty resolution in this resolution next to that, on notice of violation. I didn't realize at the time that it wasn't the full finding, it was only an expert excerpt of that finding. So the excerpt said, as long as the applicant remedies the illegal alterations to eliminate the separate dwelling unit. And it didn't include the full finding, which is what I suggest instead should be added. And that full finding is that the resolution, twenty-twenty resolution, digs agrees that the building has lost the status of pre-existing non-conforming uses of two-family residence, and decides that as long as the applicant remedies the illegal alterations to remove the separate dwelling unit, he retains his non-conforming use status. So, um, all I simply did was, uh, to make it more accurate, was to have the full excerpt, then to choose to just put a portion of the findings that were listed in the twenty-twenty resolution for that notice of violation. So again, none of these changes have any bearings on where, uh, we found on this resolution, or the reasonings for the findings, these are the factual record that was presented in the, in the resolution. That's what I have to say. All right, um, I, I will say, I don't want, there's no point in, um, from my perspective, there's no point in getting into a full discussion of all these changes. Most of, there were many other changes that were not discussed, they are not consistent, we did discuss. I'm sorry, Robin, I have to cut you off, there were these two changes, what other changes are you referring to that were not? Sorry, I have your red line, your red line shows an awful lot of changes. These are the only two changes, so I don't think you should be, you might be misinformed, or, um, we could go to. Okay, the red line, I will read you all the changes that I have. I'm sorry, Robin, I don't know what red line you are referring to, I. Red line, you circulated. Excuse me, I submitted to council these two paragraphs, and the fact that there was a typo, which I think you found as well, that we had discussed, the two hundred should be two twenty. I did not, I did not request any other changes, there are no other changes, I do not know what red line, you have to refer back to my email. In my email, I isolated the two changes, it is only those two paragraphs, which I just recited. So you are accurate to say that there were many changes, there are not. Okay, hold on a minute, I'm, I'm a little confused, because I have a, hold on, I have a red line that you circulated on. I believe that was the original red line that we were all working from, because the. No, no, no. Sorry, the document that, that our council sent was a PDF, so in order to work on a Word doc and show what I wanted, it was to only use something that had formally been a track change, he presented a track change to show all the changes he made during our discussion, plus the PDF. So I think you're looking at the one, the comparative one that Charlie sent in, I might have attempted to put my couple of changes in there, but I definitely, in our email conversation, I definitely then isolated, didn't put it in a document, these two paragraphs. And I think I also added the typo that a two hundred should be two twenty, there were no other changes, Robin, no other changes. Okay, hold on, I'm looking at the, sorry, I'm looking at the email chain, um, to see if that's right, if it is, then. I'm sorry, that you would even say, if that's right, you are saying that I am not saying that something is not true, Robin? I, 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 there's some confusion, I have to see where the confusion is, and that's all, that's what I'm saying. Are you looking at a document called comparative? Right now, I'm not looking at anything, I'm looking at emails, I'm not looking at any particular document at this moment, um, so, um, okay, so that's right, I'm just looking at emails, I'm not looking at a specific, um. Robin, what you would need to do is look at this document with those two paragraph changes against the PDF that Charlie sent out. I don't see any point to start looking, I could, I could find the email I sent it in, that's no problem. But what we're doing is you're comparing the one with the two changes, which council has now, or we've prepared, that has those two changes next to what was sent to us, and you will find is just those two paragraphs plus the typo. I'm sorry. So I'm sorry, Rob, were you offering to show the final document with?
No, no, I'm, I was looking.
I was asking Rob as question. Excuse me, Rob had proposed to put up a red line document. Was that one with all the changes that we were going to discuss before the vote or was it a word doc with just the paragraphs that I added it?
What, what I had someone create today was to take the two PDF documents, one is the final PDF that you created with those two paragraph changes in it. Compare it to the previous PDF with everything accepted. So that just the two paragraphs that you just discussed now show the, their edits. Now, because I took two PDFs and compared them, it's a bit sloppy because the formatting doesn't match up precisely. So it could get confusing with that, but I can bring that up to show those two paragraphs that you discussed, which reflect those two sets of changes.
Okay, I have found the email and you are correct, Meg. There were few, there were not as many changes as I had.
I think I had a couple of grammar questions, which I just let go.
I'm not worried about the grammar questions. There were fewer changes. I remember what the problem was. I had thought that there were other things said at that hearing that were not included, but doesn't matter. This is what, what? So what I really want to say is, I don't want to discuss these. I don't discuss the substance or anything of the changes. The three members who voted for the resolution have previously indicated that they have approved this document as changed. And since they have all previously agreed to approve this document as changed, it is not worth discussing. So let us just proceed to the vote once Rob clears up what we are voting on. Are we voting on confirming that this is the same as the original resolution? Or are we voting to confirm that this is the resolu, that the resolution has been modified and as modified, this is the resolution? I'm just a little confused.
We dealt with that on an email.
Yeah, and, and what the, just to paraphrase that email, the, the motion or what you'd be voting on to confirm is whether or not these changes reflect the comments that were made at the September 23rd meeting accurately.
Just to amend the, to correct it to, there, there are no changes of the findings whatsoever, correct?
Correct.
But I'm not, but I don't necessarily agree that the resolution as it's written and doesn't matter because we're going to vote and I don't want it. There's no point in spending time doing this since you've already all agreed that this is correct. I just want to say that I'm not sure that this is actually all correct. I think that things were left out if you go through and listen to the hearing. So let us just vote on this. Do you need a motion and do you need someone to second it or does it not need that since it's just a confirmation? What do you need, Rob?
I, I think it would be appropriate to have a motion, a second and a vote.
Okay, if someone would do that.
How the motion should read, Rob?
It, it, it could read that it's a, a motion to confirm that the changes proposed to the resolution reflects comments made at the September 23rd meeting directing that the changes be adopted and that the chair and secretary sign the resolution with the changes implemented.
Someone want to make that resolution?
I'm sorry, but that, it reflects comments because since that Robin would like to have the findings from the 2020 resolution listed in, in this resolution, but it doesn't reflect, we didn't comment on the fact that whether that was a portion of it or the full one. So I'm not sure that that resolution is accurate. Can we? That comment, that comment came afterwards that it was only a portion of the excerpt and that's.
That it's consistent with the conversation at, at the meeting because the quotation was, was in existence at the time.
Right, there was, we just expanded and made it, and made it the full quotation.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, thank you.
Okay, did you make the motion, Meg?
Greta, Greta, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, just a question, Rob. Should we also include that these, that we've deemed that these changes were not material?
Yes, that's perfectly appropriate to include.
And that, and that they don't change the findings.
Correct.
Right.
But they're not materials that do not change the findings. By definition, they're part of the whereas clauses, not the operative clauses.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, Meg.
Yes.
Greta.
Yep.
David. And I vote no. Okay, we are done.
Hi. Oh, John.
Yes, please go right ahead.
I moved to a jar.
Is there a second?
A second. There's only three of us.
Four of us.
Are you four of us? Yes.
All right, Greta, yes, we adjourning?
Yes, we are.
Okay, everyone, yes, let's adjourn.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Ashley. Thank you.
Everybody.
See you in a month. Have fun in Delaware, David.
Thank you. Well, take care. Bye bye.